Would you please?
Counsel, just as a reminder, when I, when I call your name, please announce your physical location. Councilmember Wilcoxen.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown. I'll come back. Councilmember Somerville.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Mayor Richardson.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw.
Councilmember Morgan.
President, City of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw.
Councilmember Simmons. Mr. Jones Chance.
President, City of Ypsilanti, County of Washtenaw.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown.
President, City of Ypsilanti, Washtenaw County.
Councilmember Simmons is joining now. Councilmember Simmons, roll call.
President.
And your physical location, please.
Kenton, Michigan, Wayne County.
All right, with all present, there is a call.
Thank you.
Mayor, next item on the agenda is agenda approval. Moved to approve.
There are motion.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, Mr. Wilcoxen.
I moved to approve the agenda.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Jones Chance. All in favor?
Aye.
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 As three.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Sorry, I'm just wondering if, never mind, I should have said it already. I was just gonna make a motion to amend the agenda, but I think I'm too late.
Counsel, the next item on the agenda is the work session.
Okay, we welcome Mr. Carpenter and others from ATA, also known as the RIDE, and also known as Hey There Sometimes. So, hey you. Anyway, we welcome you to our meeting, Mr. Carpenter. Thank you so much, Matt, for coming, and those that are, those that are with you. And I believe you have some information that you want to share with us either by way of presentation or just conversation, so I invite you to go ahead.
Well, thank you very much, Madam Mayor and members of council. It's, thank you so much for your time this evening. Yes, we have information to share as a presentation, and then we absolutely hope to engage you in conversation. The RIDE, as many of you know, the RIDE is the Ann Arbor Area Transportation Authority, where the public transit provider for the Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor areas. We've been working very diligently over the last six months to develop our new long-range plan. This is a 25-year plan for the future of how public transit is going to evolve in our, in our communities. And we're at a really critical point right now where we've, and some of you have been privy to these conversations. We've had some stakeholder discussions. We've talked about what people would like to see in a transit system in an abstract way. And now this week, just yesterday actually, we released some concrete ideas, really to spur discussion. These are hypothetical scenarios intended just to get the ball rolling, get the discussion rolling, see what people like, what they'd like to see more of or less of. And we're here tonight to, to introduce those to you as we kick off our month-long public consultation process. So before I introduce our consultant who will walk you through the details of that and engage your conversation, I'd like to reintroduce you to the board member that represents the City of Ypsilanti, your appointee, Mr. Jesse Miller. Jesse?
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, so my name is Jesse Miller. I'm the, the Ypsilanti-appointed board member on the, for the Board of Directors of the RIDE. I just want to say thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us today. Matt's already done a pretty good job of setting the stage for what you're about to see. But I just, I just wanted to take a moment to say that the, the topics and ideas that we're going to be talking about here are exactly the kinds of things that made me want to serve on the Board of Directors. They tucked on these important elements of accessibility and equity and infrastructure with implications for our climate goals and just the fundamental consideration of how to meet the transportation needs of our community. But we have some great experts here to walk you through the presentation in detail. And I recognize that your time is very important, that you've set aside some extra for us. So I'm not going to take up any more of your precious time, and I'll just pass things along to Matt to introduce our consultants.
Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you, and thanks for your service.
It's been a true honor.
And now I'd like to turn this over to our consulting firm. We've engaged the company called Left Turn Right Turn, and their, their lead is Mr. Yuval Greenspan. Yuval is going to walk you through a little bit of our process and scenarios, and then get you into the discussion, and we really look forward to picking your brain this evening. Take it away, Yuval.
Wonderful, and thanks for the introduction, Matt. I will ask that the host enable my screen sharing. Otherwise, I will be talking and you will not get to see all of the pretty slides that we've put together for your attention. So who can, who can help me with that, please?
Be able to share your screen.
Great, thank you. I got it. Okay, can someone just, can you give me a confirmation that you're seeing it on your side?
Yep.
Yes, we are.
Wonderful, thank you so much. So hello, everyone, and thanks again for the opportunity to present to you today on the Ride 2045, the Long Range Planning Project presently underway. My name is, as Matt introduced me, Yuval Greenspan. I'm principal with Left Turn Right Turn or LTRT, and we're working with the RIDE to help create this long plant, long-range plan for the community. Today, we're gonna go over the long-range planning process, the goals we hope to achieve, and, and we want to go over the elements of the plan itself, and specifically some of the ideas and concepts that we've put together regarding the fixed route network, what that could look like in 2045, as well as our ideas about regional connections, paratransit, and other services. It's important to note that we are still very much in the idea exploration phase. Everything you hear and see today, they represent concepts or options that were, are being evaluated, and ultimately will rely on the feedback of yourselves, customers, and residents, staff, and elected officials from the other member municipalities, as well as other stakeholders, to help us narrow in on what is the right plan for the Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area. The, the Ride 2045 Long Range Plan is a long-range plan for the Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area, and it considers the transit network, so that includes the bus routes and their frequencies. But it also is gonna be looking at new and better types of transit, new types of services, infrastructure, technology, and the fleet. And ultimately, we want to hear from all of you about what's the right balance between competing priorities. The plan is being developed with a few specific goals in mind, which very much mirror many municipal goals. Over the next 25 years, the RIDE would like to increase social equity by improving access to jobs and housing, help the environment and reduce air pollution, support existing and attract new businesses. These goals were established based on what we heard from customers, stakeholders, as well as our board, and are important in guiding how decisions are going to be made about what options we build from going forward. The, the Ride 2045 Long Range Plan was started in 2019, but it was delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic, and the process was resumed earlier this year. The, the development of the project itself takes place over four phases. The first is, was guidance, where we developed the strategy, including the goals, principles, and methodology to guide our decisions along the way. The next phase was analysis, where we looked at the current and future state. The first two phases are done, and there are summary reports on the project website, should you wish to learn more. Now we're in the third phase, where we can start to develop options or scenarios for the community to react and comment on. Based on that feedback, we'll start to narrow in on a single vision for transit in the area, and we're, we look forward to bringing that single vision forward later this winter. The last phase will be to finalize the plan, where we take everything that we've learned from the third phase, including that final vision, and put it into a realistic, implementable plan. Okay, so with that background out of the way, we want to dive into the elements of the plan itself. First, we're going to look at the core of our transit system, the network of fixed route buses that thousands of customers rely on each day. There are many ways to set up a bus network in an area. The question is, how much funding will we have, and what would we do with those different levels of funding? We have come up with four scenarios of what the network could look like in 2045 to explore different levels of funding and really start a public discussion. And the four scenarios are the baseline, so pretty much what you have today with very minimal change. Scenario two is minor enhancement. Scenario three is modest enhancement, and scenario four is major enhancement. We'll show you a bit more about each of those scenarios to help you understand what's possible in each case. But I do want to echo that, or repeat that, what we're showing you today is really just a, a touch or a taste of it, and there's more information available. I believe the packet was sent to you earlier this morning with additional details, and that's also available on our website, should you wish to learn more about any of these scenarios. So let's start with scenario one, which is the baseline. So what you're gonna see for all of the scenarios is a map of the, of the, of the scenario. The area in green is called our service area. That's, that's everywhere that is within a half-mile or 10-minute walk of a bus service of some kind. The light blue lines on each of the maps represent where we would operate a high-frequency service, buses that come at least every 15 minutes. So this scenario includes minor adjustments, as I talked about, very minimal adjustments over the next 25 years. But one thing it does include, which all of the scenarios include, is upgrades to the YTC, which is presently under capacity, or it requires additional capacity, I should say. We call this scenario the baseline because it more or less represents the status quo, the service that we operate today. Now, for each scenario, we're also going to show you a map that has approximate travel time between major destinations. So in scenario one, the travel times stay pretty much about the same as where they are today. All right, so whereas in scenario one, we didn't grow transit, and scenario two, we have a small increase in the local mileage, which helps us start to build a better service. Now, as you can see, there are major, or sorry, minor enhancements across the board, including a few more high-frequency corridors, so that's those light blue lines with 15 minutes or better service. We're also introducing, in, in this scenario, two express services, which are represented in those dark blue lines on the map. And those two express services run at least every 10 minutes, and will have faster travel times because they won't be stopping. It all stops along the route. Compared to scenario one, travel times start to improve. Here, you see a 12% improvement overall, and some more specific improvements between destinations. So we call scenario two the safe option, because we're doing just enough to keep up with the growing population and employment in the area. Now let's look at scenario three. Scenario three, we can start to make more substantial changes to our system. First, you can see, first, you can see even more of those light blue high-frequency corridors on the map. But you also see now a red line, which represents a new bus rapid transit line. Let's take a moment here to talk about what bus rapid transit means. So bus rapid transit, or BRT, can come in different flavors and varieties. But what they have in common are that they have technologies and design pieces that make them faster, more reliable, and more comfortable to use. Bus rapid transit stations are often enhanced with lighting, heaters, and real-time displays. Typically, you pay before boarding and can board from any door, which decreases the amount of time the bus has stopped, which means faster trips. The buses themselves have improved comfort features like infotainment, and the, the buses themselves can be longer or articulated, so they hold more people. Now, while this new type of transit does have a larger upfront cost to build out, it has been shown to lead to dramatic growth in ridership and transit usage. All right, so here again is scenario three. The BRT here would be operating in a shared lane, so would not be operating on a dedicated lane, so to help keep the costs lower. Regardless, it, it, along with the increased high-frequency services, do lead to significant improvement in transfers. Starting in scenario three, we're also extending our service later into the evening, and all routes have 30 minutes or better service at off-peak times, meaning you can rely on transit at any time of day. In scenario C three, we start to see some exciting results. Compared to scenario one, travel times are now 24% faster for customers. That's thanks to the introduction of BRT and expanded high-frequency service, which allows customers to transfer reliably in different locations. In scenario, in this scenario, transit service grows faster than the population and employment in the community, leading to a better service all around. Our last scenario loses, uses large investments to lead to a transformational change of our entire transit system. In this scenario, we have an extensive high-frequency network that stretches across the Ann Arbor-Ypsilanti area. We have two full-scale bus rapid transit systems here, operating in fully dedicated bus lanes, creating north-south and east-west connections. We'll have a broad network of high-frequency service that creates even better, faster connections, and even better on-time performance. And there'll be even more off-peak service that allows for seamless journeys across the entire area. The improvement in travel times is what you'd expect to see with changes proposed in scenario four. Compared to scenario one, travel times here would be 33% faster, that's right, 33%. And in some cases, 40% faster to get where you're going. That type of improvement gets people to shift their travel choices, to leave their car at home, possibly even sell that second car, and use transit on a consistent basis. This scenario has major benefits to the local economy, our environment, and supports all citizens to have reliable, fast transit access to work, school, or housing. All right, I've shared a lot of different ideas with you about how our transit system can change. There's even more we want to talk to you about. First, we want to introduce you to something called Transit Priority. Transit priority is a set of technologies and strategies that we can use to prioritize the movement of buses over cars. We didn't mention it earlier, but we are actually counting on trend, using transit priority, starting in scenario two, and stepping it up in scenarios three, and even more in scenario four. Some of the more common transit priority tools that are used include transit signal priority, queue jump lanes, and dedicated bus lanes. Happy to field more questions on this later, but in the interest of time, I'll move on. This map shows some of the areas where we're exploring the value of transit priority options, such as the ones discussed in the last slide. As you can imagine, transit priority is an important part of any of the bus rapid transit ideas we showed you in scenarios three and four. All of these options will help make transit faster, more attractive, efficient, and reliable. And that attract will help transit compete with cars, resulting in significant ridership growth. We've shown you four scenarios. These four scenarios were developed based on numerous different inputs, and based on how our community is growing and evolving over the next 25 years. We've tried our best to summarize some important information, information on the slide, but forgive us if it seems like a lot of information to take in. We just want to be as transparent as possible that achieving significant transformational change in transit will take significant investment from the community. Each of the scenarios represents what can be achieved depending on how the community is willing and able to invest in transit over the next 25 years. The most important measure when evaluating transit success is ridership, which is on that second line of this table, in the second row. How many trips are being delivered? Increased ridership means more people accessing their jobs. It means more people going shopping, visiting friends and family using transit. It means increasing access using transit to housing. And it means ultimately the transit is helping us to achieve the goals that we talked about earlier. Not surprisingly, to achieve greater transit success, significant investments are required. These investments come in the form of ongoing operating costs that would be covered through local mileage and fares. As well, one-time capital costs that would need to be covered over the next 25 years, which might be supported by federal or state support, but would require some level of local support as well. Those were the scenarios for our fixed route service, but the RIDE offers a lot more than that. We want to take a moment to talk about some of the other elements that have to be planned, like regional connections and park-and-ride, paratransit, or a ride, and other services. So how we connect to the region is critical to our long-term success. We can draw riders in from a broader area by increasing the total number of parking spaces all around our normal service area. On this map, the light green shows general areas where we have identified where we could add new parking spaces for our park-and-ride service, services. As we add parking spaces, we would also need to add express bus services to get those people into the actual center of our service area where our, our, where we operate. We've also identified important connections to downtown Detroit, the Detroit Airport, and West Wayne County. All of these elements would help better connect our community to our neighbors and help commuters coming in to work, shop, or visit Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti. It is crucial to note that partnerships and outside funding would be essential for building out these regional elements. An important part of the RIDE's mandate is to provide travel for customers with disabilities. Traditionally, this has been using ARI, our paratransit service, that complies with the Americans with Disabilities Act, or ADA. Our long-range plan for paratransit will consider the following three principles. First and foremost, we'll continue to comply with the ADA. That means investing in added service to support the expanded coverage area and hours of operation that were presented in scenarios two through four. Second, we'll look for ways to enhance accessibility and efficiency on the entire system, which reduces demand on a ride. For example, looking for ways to expand our demand services, demand response services such as Gold Ride, Flex Ride, and My Ride, and looking for ways to better connect all of these together with the increasingly accessible fixed route service. Finally, maximizing the use of technologies to improve the efficiencies and customer experience of our services for customers with disabilities. We've also been exploring other ideas that can be used together with the scenarios previously shown. These ideas vary from new technologies, improved supporting infrastructure, and new potential services. We aren't going to go into detail on these today because there's not enough time, but we welcome any questions on these. You can also find more information about them on our website. Just as a reminder, these are ideas we're considering, and we don't know yet which ones we're, are best suited for our community. And that's what we're looking to get from the feedback today, as through, as well as through our public events. There's also strategies that take time and effort, but not necessarily capital spending, to help achieve transit success. Things like increasing collaboration and organization, and, and efforts to improve organizational excellence, such as those shown on the slide right now. The last key strategy is to open, be, to continue to be open to new ideas and innovations that can emerge over time. There are always new and emerging technologies, and it would be naive to think that we know today the complete picture of how our society will look like in 25 years. But we can look at some of the exciting ideas being contemplated today, such as autonomous vehicles, connected vehicles, pedestrian detection, and others. And just, and while some of these technologies may have more potential benefit than, than others, they are also very much at different levels of maturity. So a big part of the plan is being ready for emerging technologies over the next 25 years. All right, that concludes our presentation. In just a moment, we're gonna open the floor and look forward to getting your feedback and, and thoughts. As a reminder, we are in the third phase of developing the plan, and in this phase, we're, we're developing scenarios and testing ideas. Nothing that you've heard or seen today has been decided. The concepts you've been presented were designed to garner feedback. And once we collect everyone's feedback from this round of engagement, we'll take that away and work on a more detailed final plan, which we look to bring to you early next year. We really want to hear from you, and specifically, we want to hear your general thoughts on the scenarios and concepts presented. What was there, what was there something that struck out as particularly interesting or exciting, or something that you thought was missing that should be looked at? Also, curious to get your feedback as what, with regards to what the right level of balance between costs and benefits for our communities is. And of course, thank you for your time. You can, you know, find more information, as was mentioned on our website, and we look forward to the discussion following this chat, this presentation. Thank you.
With that, Madam Mayor, we'd love to hear from you and your members, as you've all said, to, you know, what do you think of these ideas, and just get your general reactions. Madam Mayor, you're muted.
Right. I said, I think what I saw was very interesting, and it sounds wonderful if we can do it. It can be done, but I'm going to open it up to the floor for council members to hear from them, and I will come back. So, any council member ready to share their thoughts? Mr. Wilcoxen. I see that smile.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple of specific questions about the, the various routes going in there. I like the idea of, of having priority lanes. And, and the bus rapid transit, sounds great. I'm not sure if that, you know, in these scenarios, what the timeframes are, you know, is this like, and do they, are there, are they mutually exclusive? I mean, is it possible to proceed with, say, scenario two, and see what, what happens with that, and then move on to, say, scenario four at some time, you know, 20 years from now, or, you know, it's that. So that, there's one question, but in the routes, I saw an express route on 94 that went from Ypsilanti out to the west side of Ann Arbor, and I was, I was wondering about the, the impetus for that, and, and in the priority routes, there was only a, a map of Ann Arbor, and I was wondering if that was going to be planned to be expanded to Ypsilanti at all.
Thanks for the questions through you, Madam Mayor. So if, just the, the three questions, make sure I don't lose track. So the first was around, your, your first question was around if they're mutually exclusive scenarios. So I, I would, I would put forward that, right now, we're focusing on establishing the vision for what will 2045 look like. We recognize that a lot of the elements of these plans will take 25 years to build out. That's precisely what this, the point of this exercise is, is to sort of think bigger. Think about what do we want the system to look like in 2045? And then once we have that vision, our next phase of our, our work project, our work process is to build out that implementation plan and say, okay, how do we get there? How do we build out gradually over, you know, the next five years, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, 25 years? And so certainly, some of the elements that you saw in scenario two, which are easier to implement, would appear earlier. But then certain elements, you know, should we move forward with some of the more ambitious projects, like bus rapid transit, or, you know, new terminals, or something like that, those would take longer and would, you know, they require that longer runway, so to speak. And so those are the ones that would come towards the tail end of that. So hopefully that addressed that first question. Your second question was around specifically the, the idea behind the express service in scenario four. I'm happy to pull it back up for the group. If I understand correctly, you're asking about the, this express service. And so this express service here was designed based on what we're seeing in travel patterns and demand for movement, and specifically around providing better, better connectivity for folks traveling from Ypsilanti to southern Ann Arbor and western Ann Arbor, and providing a way that bypasses going through downtown Ann Arbor, thus reducing. thus reducing dramatically travel times along a lot for people taking those types of trips. And so that was the impetus for that express service. And then your third question. I'm sorry, I lost track of it. Can you just repeat your third question again for me, please?
Sure. When you presented the priority routes, there was only a map of Ann Arbor.
Yeah, and I appreciate that question. I think, you know, we're very much early days and we recognize that there's opportunities to, you know, with transit priorities in, you know, all of the municipalities, ultimately transit priority is something that would need to be designed and established and very much in conjunction with, with the traffic partners in each of the municipalities. So we're, you know, we're still assessing what the opportunities are. And then, once we have those opportunities and ideas of where it's best to use, that's when we would start to have those discussions with each of the member municipalities to fully define where it's feasible, where it can be achieved and at what stage we could count on it being there.
Jump in, I do believe scenario four with BRT with the dedicated lane does envision dedicated lanes all the way from Ann Arbor through on Washtenaw Avenue into downtown Ypsilanti. So there is some element into the city.
In the later slides, during the connectivity with Brighton and Celine and Detroit, does that fall under all the scenarios or is that just scenario four?
You're muted.
Thank you. My answer is a lot less exciting if I'm muted. The regional connections are really, can be assessed and are expected to be assessed somewhat independently from the scenarios. They can be mixed and matched because we recognize that a lot of the decisions around which of those regional connections are are built and delivered are somewhat tied also to that funding question and where you would get those partner municipalities and others involved in funding those. And so they could be bind with scenarios two, it could be combined with scenarios three, it could be combined with scenario four. And so we're sort of keeping those evaluations as separate. It's almost like a shopping list, if you, if you will.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Council members? Mr. Morgan?
I want to say thank you for the presentation. Thank you for all the information and and I know it's, it's a, it's a, it's a was looking into the future 22 years and so I'm always interested in when we're thinking about progression. These may not be, this is comments based on what I'm seeing. I'm still wondering in 2045, you know, who would be the greatest stakeholder at that point versus the least stakeholder? We're thinking about creating this infrastructure of transit and I can't forget that, you know, the ATA is a business that's growing and expanding. So I'm always concerned about the layout of the land in 25 years or 23 years. And if some of those plans that are being made with certain ridership, I know it's hard to see far enough into the future to determine what type of major type of changes will be happening to the environment. Um, then you think about competition with, I'm 43 now and I'm thinking, and by the time 45 come, I'll be a senior, get my senior pass. Some of the high schoolers will be in their 40s with families. And so we're thinking about how things change over time in this long-range plan. And I'm thinking about the competition with Uber and Lyft and other forms. Does, are they independent of what your plan is in ATA? And then in my, in my greatest, I'm thinking about the urban demand, the response for the riderships and how all that plays a part. And again, I can't see 2045 until I see 2035, until I see 2025. But I know incrementally, the goal is to, to make some of these things come to fruition. So I appreciate some of the theoretical slash potential plans that could be manifested into real tangible ideas and concepts. But I'm still, again, I'm grateful that Ypsilanti is being considered. And I'm thinking over that time, what would be the the specific and particular interest that the ride will take into our city and what will be our continual investment over the next two decades in conjunction with the plan that you guys are creating and how much of the plan is interconnected with the Washtenaw 2030 Plan that talks about sustainability in transit? And is it woven into those plans also? And either way, it's a long for the ride. No pun intended. So thank you for the information. I'm looking forward to being a part of them in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Anyone else?
If I may, I would welcome to just provide some commentary to that too, Madam Mayor. That's okay?
Sure, go right ahead.
And I recognize, Counselor, there was no specific question there, but just it did trigger some thoughts and I'd be happy to share them. So first, yeah, we did extensive review of all of the official and municipal plans and the regional plans to get an understanding of what is planned for the communities. And, you know, how are the communities expected to change and grow? And so those were all inputs that I talked about earlier around the four phases of our project. That was the second phase was looking at and trying to get a grasp as much as one can. You're right, like there's, you know, if you had asked three years ago, what would life look like in 2021? No one would have guessed and no one would, no one, you know, we would have had a better chance winning the lottery, I think. But, you know, using all of those inputs, using population projections, employment projections to inform our, a potential picture of what 2045 will look like. And then those have been used to start to give thought to what could transit look like. Now, you raised the point that, you know, there's only so much value in long-range planning and certainly anything we do has to be focused on the bigger picture elements. And that's sort of why we aren't necessarily trying to figure out down to which road a bus is going to be traveling on because we know that in 20 years, whoever's still around is going to be in a much better position to draw that line on the map. But there is value in having the discussions now around those bigger flows, those bigger travel patterns to then be able to make decisions, strategic decisions around specifically bigger picture, bigger investment, longer timeframe elements. So, you know, you can't wait 25 years or you can't even wait 20 years or even 15 years to say, you know, in 2045, we want a bus rapid transit. Those types of decisions have to happen early enough that you can start to then go through the long process of establishing the correct alignment, doing all of the design work, getting additional funding, finding those funding partners and then building it. Those types of projects, projects take time. And so that's really the impetus between, behind a lot of long-range planning. And then within that, you know, the ride as an organization will have the responsibility of doing those intermediate, ongoing checkpoints to say, are we still moving forward in the right direction? Are things still developing in the right direction? Has the environment changed? Are there new technologies that are out there that we didn't even know about? You know, in 2021, when we talked about this and then reacting to those and either saying, okay, we need to go back, you know, and reset in 2030, what the 25-year plan is or course correct a little bit. But those are the types of things that have to happen on an ongoing basis.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcoxon. I believe you have your hand up.
Yep.
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I asked this question in the meeting earlier this year that Councilmember Morgan and I attended. Connection with regional transit, you know, I know that that has been hit or miss conversations over the, over the last several years. And it seems like with some of the connections that you're making to the outlying areas and moving in, you know, having connection to Detroit, that it doesn't seem like you're pretty much stuck in that or, or and it seems like kind of building it here and if we build it, you know, it may follow suit further east and southeast Michigan. So, you know, our other our other municipalities farther east, have you had conversations with those folks to see how this would connect with their systems? I don't think any of the municipalities you listed have their own systems at this point, but.
Through you, Madam Mayor. So our scope, for our study is the three-member municipalities. So looking at within the city of Ann Arbor, city of Ypsilanti and Ypsilanti Township. And so, you know, our focus has been on that. We recognize that there are opportunities and specifically even today, the ride operates and services to some of the other townships and perhaps that can grow as well. And so we're going to have specific discussions with those, with those municipalities or those governments to understand what their appetite is for, for growing the service. The RTA does have another or a parallel planning effort that is underway that's looking more at that broader regional transport picture. So that is happening. And one of the things that we've been focused on and as, you know, we, limited by time today, we didn't get a chance to talk much about it, but there is, there is a other, one of the other strategies we talked about was increased collaboration and a recognition that especially as the RTA tries to build up their, you know, a better regional connections and as we build out this, the ride, that that needs to be done hand in hand and there needs to be, you know, good collaboration between the two organizations to make sure that what they're planning and what they're delivering is aligned with what the ride will be planning and delivering.
If I could, I've actually attended a couple of the sessions that the RTA is doing. And they've made a point of, you know, they are aware of what we're doing. They've made a point of saying that the ride is going through their own long-range planning process. So there is, we were certainly working in a certain amount of cooperation on these plans.
And if I might throw one more log on that fire and you've all, you might want to bring up the express bus slide because this gets lost. There's so much going on in some of these maps. It can be easy to overlook. You see there, obviously Ann Arbor is a major hub, but Ypsilanti is not forgotten as well. You can see light blue lines radiating out of Ypsilanti. And one of those routes goes from Ypsilanti to Canton. The other one is intended to represent a potential bus route in the future that would be one of those highway coaches like Air Ride or Detroit to Ann Arbor, which restarted this week. And that route would go from Ypsilanti to Detroit Metro Airport and then on to Detroit. It's an open question, Counselor, and it's a good one. Is that our job or the regional transit authority's job? That's a good question and who would pay for it? We've been talking with the RTA all along and we all agreed, let's start by figuring out what the community wants and needs. And once we get agreement on that, then we'll figure out who's supposed to take responsibility for it and how to pay for it. So first thing is, is this the right kind of service? And if it is, then we'll sort out the rest later.
So is the plan, if we do regional connections, I see how the other regional corrections that are going west is from Ann Arbor. And, you know, they're kind of the hub. So if we were to go more eastern, Ipsy, like maybe downtown Ipsy, the improvements you're doing or that you plan, have plans for, would probably be the hub for that? Or, or how would that work? I'm just curious because I see everything coming out of Ann Arbor. And if you have plans for improvements with some of those other routes or connections, you know, coming out of Ypsilanti, would it be, yeah, right where that cursor is?
Right. So through you, Madam, Madam Mayor, the, these light blue lines originate out of the YTC. Or what, you know, or downtown, downtown Ypsilanti, right? Yeah. Does that, was that your question is do it like the red, the red line goes via, via Ypsilanti, but then ends up or terminates in Ann Arbor? But the light blue lines terminate in Ypsilanti?
Right. And so I guess I was saying, because I know when I looked on the legend, it doesn't say downtown Ypsilanti, but I'm saying as we move forward and if things develop more toward regional I'm assuming that, you know, this particular location will be put there with other destinations going east.
Right. And that's where I was referring to earlier around understanding the high level without necessarily the specific location, right? The specific route of these, which road is it going to take and all of that? It's not something that we're looking to necessarily fix on right now. We're trying to make sure that we understand that there's a need for service, a demand for service that comes from downtown Ypsilanti. As Matt mentioned, one going to West Wayne County and then the other via the airport to Detroit.
And I'll add that in our discussions on the sort of technical aspects of this with the RTA, very explicitly, it's understood that the YTC, the Ypsilanti Transit Center is the hub and will continue to be the hub for bus services into the future. Whether those are RTA services or our services, that's part of the reason we want to expand that service is to be ready or expand that facility is to be ready for whatever services might come in the future.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Matt. You mentioned expand or at one time there was talk of not just expanding the facility there, the transit center, but was in talk about building a new one. So are, where does that fit in this plan? Are you thinking of still building a new center or what?
And I apologize if I'm switching between different descriptions. The, the plan that we've discussed, I think with you, Madam Mayor, and with your counsel in the past, has not changed. We've had some great conversations with your staff and our intent remains very much the same. Our hope is to, on the site that the existing Ypsilanti Transit Center is today on Pearl Street, to effectively knock down the existing facility and build a much larger one on the same block. We recognize in working with your staff, there's a lot of good considerations about land acquisition and consolidation that we need to have with your community and we're excited to begin those things. But as you've all mentioned at the beginning, all of these scenarios require that facility to be expanded, upgraded, rebuilt, however we want to say it. But our plans for it have not changed. It's completely new and larger facility on the same site.
Right. Thank you. Mr. Wilcoxon, I believe your hand is up.
Yep. I was just curious about the basis for the estimates on the increased ridership for the different scenarios. I'm all about getting people out of the cars and I think we touched on this previously about, you know, what it will take to to convince folks. I mean, so having, having, clearly there's going to be, this is going to have to go hand in hand with increased marketing. You know, as Councilmember Morgan said earlier, you know, it's like, how, how is this going to compete with things like Uber and Lyft? And I'm just curious about what the, where those estimates come from. Is that from cities, you know, similar size? How do you, how do you track that trajectory?
Through you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, so there's a lot of data analysis and modeling that goes into that, as you can imagine. And that's informed by, you know, what's other jurisdictions experience as well as research into what's called elasticity? Or if you increase a certain levels of service, how many more customers will it get? And so there's a lot of research and analysis that goes into that. And generally speaking, the things that drive ridership are proximity to high-frequency service, right? And so especially like, you know, the higher order services like bus rapid transit and the high-frequency network, those are the types of things that really drive ridership. And so that's why when you look at scenarios three and four, which have a greater investment in those, they have a significant rider, ridership increase that's greater than the amount of investment putting in. You effectively are doubling service in scenario four, but you're getting one and a half times as many ridership or two and a half times, I should say. You you effectively are doubling service in scenario four, but you're getting one and a half times as many ridership or two and a half times, I should say. And and that's because of the, uh, and this has been experienced elsewhere around people. Once they get to that point where they can rely on transit without necessarily having to look at a schedule. Uh, and figure out, okay, I have to leave in three minutes to catch my bus and just knowing that, okay, I can just leave at any time. And get to the bus stop and I won't have to wait more than five, 10 minutes. It just becomes something that people can then react to and then change their habits around. Uh, and so that's sort of the psychological behind it and and there, yeah. And so all of the the analysis was was based on all of those different inputs and research that we did. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
I'm sorry, I'm muted. Yes, uh, Mr. Morgan.
Well, thank you. This will be my final comment, uh, on this matter. Uh, again, thank you so much for the presentation. This is, I would be remiss if I didn't say this and it's no fault or particular, um, no one has done this. However, in my opinion, I've written, I've written the ATA bus for years, uh, driven for years, rode bikes or whatnot. But to me, when I look at the ATA, AATA is definitely a. A vessel of transit, gets people around, but I look at it as as a tool that takes resources from Ypsilanti. Because I do believe there are more buses going out to to take resources from our city to Ann Arbor. As opposed to Ann Arbor or surrounding areas bringing resources here. And that's not a fault to anyone in the workforce, most of the workforce from Ypsilanti has to catch the bus or ride into Ann Arbor to pay more taxes, more lunch. More different things that benefits that city. And it's just as a appearance that it doesn't. And again, we're smaller, we don't have as much, you know, different things, we're just little sister. However, it appears that Ann Arbor gets the big pot that always gets to eat. And from our transit, from our folks, from some of the services that we take into Ann Arbor. So it will be nice as this 2045 plan evolves that it it appears at least that the equity is flowing back and forth. Thank you.
I I wonder if I might jump in and ask Counselor Morgan to expand on that. Because I, in my, in my time here, I have occasionally bumped into, uh, the perception I think you're alluding to. And I I'd love to learn more about, uh, about what you mean.
But a perception, in my opinion, of. How many people come from Ann Arbor City to catch the bus to work here and and benefit our city? Um, who comes to park here, who comes to ride, who comes to different events? I think using the transit, I think the transit goes west where more than it comes east. And I think more, I think more, uh, again, east of 23 especially, I think is a big divide between how the system is used. Um, and I do think it's used here in the far east on some parts. But again, when we're talking about getting out to Willow Run and some of those little areas. I but again, it's the perception of, you see groups of people at the YTC waiting on buses to get to University of Michigan to get to. Uh, all those places. And again, it's 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 only happenstance that we're in that direction, that that's where a lot of them. But again, it it clearly, a lot of my money went to, um. Paying different things that it that involves with supporting Ann Arbor. And again, more buses go that way, I think, than come this way rightfully so, I think. So that's a that's a perception from the people that I had shared at one point, again, before I started driving. And still, sometimes I still believe that. So that's just a perception that can change. And, um, again, if you heard it from the top, uh, I guess it's not a, it's a squeaky wheel. So maybe it has some truth to it, but it's just a development and something we probably could, you know, in the next few years, if we, you know, put some. You guys are doing a great job of what you've already doing of supporting Ypsilanti and keeping our transit, keeping our workers, keeping our families connected. So, oh, I think the job of the AAT is to continue doing that efficiently and better.
Yeah. If if I can respond or provide some thoughts on that.
You've all, if you don't mind, um, I I'll I'll jump in.
Okay.
Because I remember in our, thank you, first of all, Counselor, for for those those thoughts. I really appreciate that insight. And it's good to understand how those perceptions, uh, are. I remember in our preliminary discussions about the plan, uh, this is going back some time ago. Forrest and I were discussing, uh, one of the questions came up. How would, what would the best way to reduce travel time for the people of Ypsilanti be? Would it be an express bus to Ann Arbor, BRT to Ann Arbor? And one of us said, well, the best way to reduce their travel time is for them not to leave Ypsilanti at all. For them to have all their needs, take all their jobs in Ypsilanti. To 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 all the grocery stores, they need everything they want right there and to have not have to leave. If that was the situation that developed in the future, I think the ride would be just over the moon happy. Uh, that would be a fabulous arrangement from our perspective because it means our customers have a shorter travel time. Yeah, it just so happens, the situation we all have right now is that Ann Arbor is the dominant job center. Uh, and I'm sure people in Brighton have the same complaint that all their labor force gets sucked up, uh, US 23. Uh, to go work, uh, in Ann Arbor. And that's just the situation, uh, we all have. But I would be happy to speak with you guys more. I'd love to hear more about those perceptions, but rest assured, uh, from the perspective of developing this plan. Uh, we take Ypsilanti's needs very, very seriously and making sure that those needs, uh, you know, whether they be. Social equity, affordable housing, access to jobs, education. Uh, wherever those things are in the future, we will find the best way to serve them. So I just wanted to to put that right on the table.
Thank you for your direct response. I appreciate it.
No problem.
All right. Well, we're, we're winding down on time. Um, anyone else, council member? Any other staff? I can't, I can't not see in all the staff, but, okay. Thank you so much for taking the time to come to do this presentation. And, uh, the last little bit between from, uh, Mr. Morgan and you, Matt, that, um. I think about that and have thought about that often. Uh, we need to get more people coming into Ypsilanti than are traveling out. And that's something that we we will have to work on. However, when we started looking at this, first started looking at your presentation. The thought that kept coming to mind when we're talking about 2045. Uh, my thought was, well, you've got the wrong people at the table here. You need to be talking to younger people that will be the bill, real bus riders. Uh, in 2045, because I think a few of us around at this table. Our, uh, bus riding days might just be, you know, winding down. They they'll, our bus troops might be few and far between. So I do, and I do suggest to you that you talk with, uh, do this presentation to some younger. Some younger people, some of the, uh, the high school students and, uh, even middle school students. That will be, um, bus riders in 2045. But, um, the whole thing sounds exciting. And I know that there's still lots of work to be done on it. And I encourage you to keep on with the work that, you know, that you're doing. And if either any of you want to have some, uh, words to close this out, please go right ahead.
Sure. Thank you so much. And I'll just echo, uh, Jesse's comments at the beginning. Thank you so much for your time. This has been a wonderful conversation. I got a lot out of it. Uh, and we look forward to hearing even more from you. As we mentioned in the presentation, we have a project website. We have public meetings, albeit virtual, uh, coming up shortly. And we have an online survey. We really love it. If you guys, after this introduction, you 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 wake up in the middle of the night thinking about that great idea that didn't occur to you while we were on the screen. Please, 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 uh, don't lose that, get up out of bed, write it down. Uh, and and visit our project page, fill out the survey, uh, tell us about that stuff. We really want, uh, to hear, uh, the hopes and fears and dreams that everyone has. So thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Thank you very much for for coming and reaching out to us. We appreciate it. So. Okay, any council person or anybody else?
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing no hands or no one speaking up. Thank you and, uh, stay safe, stay well.
Thank you very much.
Very much, Council.
Thanks very much.
All the best. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
Um, Council, the next item on the agenda is the, uh, public comment section. Uh, if anyone, uh, on the attendees list would like to make comment, please raise your hand. Uh, you'll have three minutes to address counsel. Excuse me, the first individual with their hand raised is a Brian Merlos. I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to to address counsel.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Um, thank you to, uh, Mayor, uh, Lois and the members of the council. For giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brian Merlos. Uh, I live in Ypsilanti on Congress Street, just across from the senior center at Recreation Park. Uh, it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Uh, I wanted to introduce myself. Uh, my name was, uh, graciously nominated, uh, to be a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, I am very excited about this opportunity. Wanted to share a little bit about my background, um, and and sort of my experience and some of my, uh, my vision, I think. For, uh, for what makes, uh, the parks and recreation system great and how we can, of course, continually be working to improve it. Um, so to start, uh, my name is Brian. Uh, I lived in Ypsilanti for almost three years now. Um, with my, uh, partner, my now wife, uh, who has lived here for about five years, so in the area for for some time. Um, uh, we just bought a house last year, uh, looking for ways to get involved. Um, the parks and recreation system has always been something that has really mattered to me. Both for, uh, structured park programming, things like youth baseball, which we see across the street. And and activities at the senior center and then unstructured things, um, both in, uh. In in recreational parks like Recreation Park, but also in, uh, more nature preserve type areas where you can get out and enjoy nature. Uh, I worked for the Audubon Society for a couple of years, uh, recently, uh, learning about, uh, the the importance of of birding. As part of the ecological system, birds and and how to absorb them and learning what they provide. Uh, giving me a more complete picture of the ecological whole. Um, I was an act, I was a volunteer and then later an employed member of Clark Park in Detroit. When I lived in Detroit, um, as the hockey program manager. So looking at, you know, those structured activities, that structured programming that parks can bring, um. Additionally, uh, I, uh, look at things from, uh, from a climate perspective with, um. Uh, uh, I was a participant during the the pandemic in, uh, the Drain Commissioner Evan Pratt's, uh, Master Rain Gardener Program. So learning about, um, the importance of rain gardens and how they can affect storm management. And I'm curious to, uh, see how our parks can take advantage of of some of these natural, um. You know, built up but naturally occurring phenomenon, uh, in in storm, in rain gardens and in storm drains. To help manage some of our our overflow water system, which, uh, after the rainstorms we've had this year, I know. Um, I I'm certainly, as a new homeowner, curious to see how we can, uh, mitigate, uh, water damage in people's basements. Yeah, so, uh, happy to answer any questions anyone might have. So a brief intro on me.
Mayor, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, um, for introducing yourself. This is not a time where counsel goes back and forth with, um, with the audience. So, but thank you for very much for, uh, applying and thank you very much for coming to introduce yourself to us. So. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Counsel, the next individual with their hand raised is Interfaith Council for Peace and Justice. I'll allow them to speak now. You have three minutes to address counsel.
Hello, good evening. This is Desiree Simmons. And I'm calling in with a lot, something very different than what I talked about in the past with counsel. I had, um, the experience, uh, I'll call it that last Thursday of going before the administrative, uh. Board, um, and, uh, I'm bringing it here. Be, I'm just, I had a very interesting conversation with James Jackson, um, who does enforcement. Um, and that I was brought before this board. Really because my neighbor is using, uh, the city resources. To deal with whatever she's trying to deal with. And, you know, situation where technically as the ordinance is, and I wish I had this information afforded me. But y'all know about, um, uh, a lot of things around the flowers. Where he even said that, you know, the ordinance reads about shrubs, um, bushes, things like that. So my flowers also, you know, weren't, aren't even included. And also from his estimation, did not cause, um, visual impediment. But even within that, um, that we actually mitigated the issue based on what was in the ordinance. Within the timeframe that we were expected to do so based on the letter. But that the neighbor kept calling him and kept wanting something more to be done. Um, and so that is why we were brought before the board. And, um, the other part of the conversation is with the person who was presiding over the board. Once, um, the situation was explained, he made it also clear that, oh, it's another one of these, we have been here before. This is something that happens a lot. And so, um, to me, this is an issue, um, not only because, you know, from my perspective. You know, it's not something light to have to be. Face to be presided over for anything. And to take the time and effort and have to prepare yourself to do that. Is one thing. But also that it's being used really in, you know, really validating the, my neighbor. Because she was using, again, city resources and time to try to punish me. Way, uh, where when I asked her directly, she actually told me that, no, she had not been reporting it. So she lied to my face multiple times as well as my husband. So, um. And Mr. Jackson also made clear that this happens constantly. So something needs to be done.
Desiree, um, Ms. Simmons, your time is up. So I would like to talk with you, um, further. At another time, if we can talk to get a better understanding of what, uh, what exactly what happened and what the complaint was. If you would, please. Thank you.
Um, Council, seeing no other hands currently raised, I did receive a comment, uh, via email. Um, I will set the timer on myself now. The comment is from Reza Rajabi. I sent Mr. Myers, a planning department, an email stating for legal matters against the city, I need answers to the following questions. The response was something like, since I was threatening to sue the city, he would refer my email to the city attorney's office. Mr. Barr, the city attorney, sent me a letter using a lot of legal jargon to intimidate me. Mr. Barr, I advise you, instead of bullying me to answer my questions. I am a city taxpayer and entitled to get logical answers to logical questions. What did you do when I sent you a letter about the city barring me from going into city hall to conduct my business? Nothing. What did you do when I wrote you a letter stating Sergeant Ebert had called me a liar? Nothing. What did you do when I wrote you a letter stating Mr. Rode, the city inspector, had accused me of stealing? Nothing. Mr. Barr, whether I want to sue the city or not, you are obligated to answer my questions. A few pennies of a salary, you are getting to put bread on your table, come from my property. You are stating that I do work in my rental property without pulling the city permit. The city sent me an application about the status of my building at 114 North Summit. The city accordingly issued me certificate of occupancy for three, two, meaning three efficiencies and two rooms sharing the same bathroom and kitchen. However, I have always the two rooms unit as one bedroom apartment. I was out of the country and city forced my daughter to to change it into a duplex. I came back from my native home and paid an application via 400 to change it back the way it was before. After doing all work and spending a lot of money, the city dropped a bombshell on me, saying before going to the city board for its approval. I should also have water sprinklers. I told Mr. Myers, there are a lot of rental properties having multiple units in a rental building that do not have water sprinklers. He answered that they had been grandfathered in. I don't buy it, period. I am running out of patience. Enough is enough. I demand. I am running out of patience. Enough is enough. I demand you take the proper and just action for my issues. I am tired of making requests. If anyone else would like to address council, please raise your hand. Seeing no hands raised, it's at the pleasure of council. Would you like to move on to the next item?
Yes, please. There are no other hands.
Council, the next item is introductions of new employees.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. It is my pleasure to introduce our two newest team members to our staff. As a result of the retirement of our human resources manager, Kimberly Jones, we had a vacancy in our human resources department. Through recruitment and the receipt of applications, we interviewed four applicants and we were able to, well, actually, we had a whole lot of applicants, I believe over 50, but we were able to narrow it down to four. And our selection was Mr. Dewan Fisher, who was present here with us tonight. And he's going to tell you a little bit about himself. Immediately when he's done, we're going to hear from Tom Cook. He's our new communications manager. As a part of the council goals, it was council's desire. And it's a much position, especially in my department, to help me do some heavy lifting and also to keep the connection going with the community about what's happening in the city and to help us with grant writing. We chose Tom Cook. So immediately after Dewan Fisher introduces himself, Tom Cook will introduce himself. Thank you for this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Francis, I appreciate that warm introduction. Thank you all for the opportunity and space. As has been already stated, my name is Dewan Fisher. I am excited to be in this role, to learn more about the public sector and to see how my skill set can be of assistance to each department and kind of relieve some of the burden and administrative relief from the department. I do have a bachelor's in human resource development from Oakland University and a master's degree from CMU in human resource management. I've been in the human resource field for the last 12 years. I've served in multiple capacities from HR assistant all the way up to HR director. I've done a lot of different things as far as Six Sigma, which I'm certified in, DDI. I have several tons of certifications. I'm a part of the Association of Workplace Investigation. And I also sit on the board for the National Minority Supply Development Council, as well for Michigan. I'm truly excited to be in this role and I hope that I can be of service to you all. Thank you so much for this opportunity and space.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Welcome to, welcome to the Ypsilanti family.
Thank you.
Yes.
Welcome.
Hi, greetings to all, council, Mayor Richardson, staff, and any members of the community present. My name is Thomas Cook. You may call me Tom. I was recently hired as the communication manager for the city of Ypsilanti. And I'm thrilled for this opportunity to build new connections and contribute to the community that I've been living in for the last three and a half years. I'm an Eastern Michigan alumni. That's where I received my communication background. And I've met several new faces just in the short amount of time that I've been here and I look forward to meeting more people every single day. I pride myself on human interaction. You can find me at the city hall on the fourth floor. And please stop by and say hello or reach out. Really looking forward to this opportunity and serving Ypsilanti in the best way possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate you coming on and again, welcome to the Ypsilanti family. Glad to have you here.
Glad to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
And thank you, city manager, for those introductions.
You're welcome. I'm really excited for both of them. So when you see them out, make them feel welcome.
Yes. Okay, if any other council members want to welcome, say welcome or.
Welcome, Tom. Glad to have you brothers here, City of Ypsilanti. Look forward to meeting you.
Okay, Mr. Helanga, it looks like you can move on. We can move on. Again, welcome to both of you.
Council, moving on to the next section, presentations. We have a proclamation for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Breast cancer, whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most commonly, common newly diagnosed cancer and second leading cause of cancer deaths among Michigan women. And whereas in 2019, 9,000 new cases and 1,387 deaths of breast cancer reported to women. And whereas in Michigan, an estimated 8,940 new cases of breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2021. And an estimate of 1,420 women will die of the disease. And whereas certain factors put some women at a higher risk than others, including age, personal or family history of breast cancer, specific genetic mutations, dense breast tissue, starting menstruation at a young age, never giving birth or having first pregnancy after age 30. And whereas breast cancer mortality is nearly 40% higher for black women than white women, as black women are often diagnosed at later stages when treatments are limited and costly and the prognosis is poor. And whereas breast cancer is the most common cancer diagnosed and the leading cause of death in Hispanic Latina women. And whereas through research and advocacy, advances have been made in the fight against breast cancer, including increased rate of early detection and a 98% five-year survival rate of localized breast cancer. And whereas October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, an annual campaign to increase awareness about this disease and to raise funds for research into its cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and ultimately finding a cure. And whereas during this month, we should reaffirm our commitment to supporting breast cancer research and to educating all citizens about its risk factors, detection and treatment, as well as the importance of regular screenings as early detection increases the effectiveness of available treatments. And whereas as we display pink ribbons and wear pink clothing to raise awareness, we also recognize more than 3. million breast cancer survivors, those currently battling the disease and their families and friends who are tireless source of love and encouragement. We commend the efforts of our medical professionals and researchers working to find a cure for this deadly disease and we honor the lives lost to breast cancer. Now therefore, I, Lois Allen Richardson, Mayor of the City of Ypsilanti, hereby proclaim October 2021 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Ypsilanti.
Thank you, Mr. Helanga.
If there is nothing from council, we can move on to the next section. Moving on to the next section, the consent agenda. Resolution number 2021 dash 217, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti that the following items be approved. Resolution number 2021 dash 218, approving the minutes of October 5th, 2021. Resolution number 2021 dash 219, approving appointments to boards and commissions.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported to approve the consent agenda.
Council, proceed with reading the roll. Mayor Potem Brown. Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution, I'm sorry, next section, resolutions, motions and discussions. Resolution number 2021 dash 220, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the council of the city of Ypsilanti deems it to be in the best interest of the city to continue to keep healthcare costs in line with our budget. And whereas the current Blue Cross Blue Shield and Blue Care Network plans will continue to keep healthcare costs in line with our budget while still offering additional benefits to the active employees and retirees that are eligible to participate. Now therefore be it resolved that the council of the city of Ypsilanti approve a one-year contract from January 1, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, to offer the following Blue Cross Blue Shield and Blue Care Network benefit plans while eligible participating employees and retirees. Community Blue PPO, Simply Blue PPO 3000, BCN, HMO, HSA, and Medicare Advantage. Further, the council of the city of Ypsilanti approves a one-year contract with EHIM to administer the self-funded WRAP and prescription portions of the BCBS Community Blue PPO program and coordinated all benefits and costs with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan.
So moved.
Support.
Been moved and supported. Any comments, questions? Mr. Fisher, do you have a presentation for us? I see you.
No, actually, Kim is still our HR manager.
Okay.
I just wanted to give a little intro. As you already know, the city currently provides active employees and retirees healthcare, healthcare benefits and options. And it is now open enrollment. And so we have our HR manager and our contractor, Michelle Bowser from VTS, to explain to you a little bit about our coverage, the plans that we're going to be providing. So Kim, I'm introducing Kim, who will bring forth Michelle.
Okay.
Good evening, council. So tonight we have, good evening. Tonight we have our finance director and treasurer Reagan Basavika here to go over the financial details for you. And as our city manager said, Michelle Bowser, who works for VTC Insurance, is here to answer any questions you may have about our plans. I want to mention that we didn't make any changes to our healthcare plans. We did make one improvement to our vision and plan. We're going with, it still falls under the Guardian umbrella, but instead of a VSS, it's going to be VSP, which has a lot, it's the United States' largest optical network provider. And I think that will take care of a lot of the issues we've had with people not being able to find local providers under a VSS. And with that, I'll turn it over to Michelle and Reagan.
Okay, this is Michelle from VTC Insurance. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I just wanted to point out, I wanted to point out that this is the second year in a row that the city has actually experienced an overall decrease in premium rates, which is pretty outstanding. This year, overall, there was a 1.87% decrease in your active, your under 65, and your grandfathered retiree enrollees. So this is based upon your overall census demographic, the claims that are being utilized, including medical and prescription drug. And the good news is, is that last year, we had a 16.5% overall decrease. This year, a 1.87%. And that simply means that claims are trending in the right direction. We had no catastrophic claims, which means claims over $125,000. So things are looking very good. And that said, as Kim had mentioned, no changes to any of the medical plans were needed for this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's good news.
Yes.
Reagan.
Okay.
Mr. Bassabika. Yes, I'm just here for, if you have any questions, I have nothing to, to report.
All right, thank you. Council, any questions for Mr. Basavika?
I just had.
Mr. Morgan.
I was just curious about what clues could lead us to, give us some understanding of what's leading to those trends of going in the right direction.
Great question. So claims are down. So meaning utilization overall as a group has, for the past 24 months, improved significantly. Why is that the case? I wish I could, could tell you. I don't know, but we're going to run with it. It's good news. Again, no catastrophic claims for the past two years, which again, is a threshold of $125,000 or more per claimant, meaning no open heart surgeries, no significant cancers, nothing catastrophic. Prescription drug usage is also down. So again, good stuff is happening. I would love to say it's because people are taking care of themselves. I don't know that that's the case, but again, it's, it's good news. So let's say it. They're taking care of themselves.
Yeah, they are. Good. Awesome. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Now, is that, is this a trend that is trending across the state, across the nation? Or is this something that we're leading the pack on again?
Well, Madam Mayor, that's a great question. And no, what I can actually tell you is that a statistic that's very interesting is that in 2019, Blue Cross Blue Shield paid more out in prescription drug claims than they did in medical claims.
Wow.
And when you stop to think about that, that's absolutely, it's, it's crazy numbers. The reason being is that all of the medications we see advertised on TV, these specialty drugs that can cost 5, 10, 15, or even $20,000 per month, the city is not experiencing any of those. You, you know, you have a couple, couple, what we call specialty medications, which again, are the more costly medications that every group of your size has. But you're not being hit like most groups are, not only here in the state of Michigan, but also nationally. So you bring up a great question. You're doing better than most, whether it's public sector, private sector. Your group is just on a great trend right now. Those don't always last forever, but right now, again, the claims are just pointing to a more healthy group than you guys have had in several years. And thus the reduction in rates.
That's good to hear. Let's keep it up. Yes. Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, other than the issues with the vision providers, have there been any complaints about the current plan from staff?
The current medical plans?
Yeah.
Or the, yes, no complaints about the medical plans?
Anyone else?
Mr. Bryant, Mr. Jones Chance, we had some complaints in the past because we didn't have a variety of options. And now we have just a variety of options. I think that is why we don't have the complaints. You can go to H, you can do the HMO, you can do the PPO. And before, I think we didn't, our, our choices were limited. So I think that's why most of our, well, our employees are sad.
Okay, so the current, the current plan is working.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council? Mr. Wilcoxen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm just curious about the kind of collective bargaining for, for pricing on insurance like this. I'm, you know, we've been doing this kind of solo as a city. Does MML or any other consortium of municipalities have greater bargaining power for, for, for benefits of this thing?
Francis, I'll let you answer that.
Well, I've never used MML because I think you're saying as a group.
Yeah.
No, we use them for workers' comp. I don't even know if they offer it for health insurance. I, I think most municipalities do it independently. I have not seen anything like that from MML. Have you, Mayor?
No, I haven't. No.
But I'm sure if we did something like that, we probably could get some good rates. This will be a bigger group.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
Or not. Because sometimes a bigger group brings more, more other problems, so.
Right. And it might be that it, that it's not there because it really would not be beneficial. Because MML is usually pretty much up on anything that would help its members. So it might be, I can certainly, I will certainly ask them and find out, Mr. Wilcoxen.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other questions or comments from council members? Okay, seeing none from those council people that I can see, Mr. Helanga, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously?
All right, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Jones and Mr. Basavika and this Bose, is it Bowser?
Bowser.
Bowser, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two-two-one, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the City Council of the City of Ypsilanti deems it necessary to comply with the State of Michigan two zero one-one Public Act one fifty-two as amended. And whereas the act contains three options for complying with the requirements of the act as follows. Hard cap option limits employers' total annual health costs for employees based on coverage levels. Eighty-twenty, eighty percent, twenty percent option limits employees' share of total healthcare costs to not more than eighty percent. Requires annual majority vote. Opt-out option, the city may exempt itself from requirements of the act by an annual two-thirds vote. And whereas the City Council decided to adopt the opt-out option as its choice of compliance under the act, now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Ypsilanti elects to comply with two zero one-one Public Act one fifty-two by approving and adopting the opt-out option for the medical benefit plan coverage year one-one twenty-two through twelve thirty-one twenty-two.
I'm moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any questions, comments, discussion, or presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to point out that as the clerk mentioned, we are asking you to approve option three again. This is the same option we've approved in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And Mr. Basavika is here again if you have questions related to the financial aspects of this choice.
Thank you. Council, any questions or comments? Questions for Mr. Basavika?
I only have one question.
Mr. Morgan?
Oh, this is a situation in which we have to opt out, where they can choose to opt out each year, so each year it must be voted on?
Yes.
I'm asking a question.
Yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay.
All right, Councilmember Morgan, my, I was muted. I know you can't hear my head shake.
Okay, okay, yeah, I could, I, I, I felt, but no, so it's an annual thing, but it can be opted out by two-thirds vote. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
I'd like to make a comment. As Council, some Council members may remember in the past, we, we used the eighty-twenty split for coverage, and we also talked about the hard cap. But last year, we got creative, and the formula that we used was the eighty-five fifteen, and that seems to work for us. And we do realize some cost savings as a whole on premiums when we use that. We have greater, we have more employees, we have added to our, to our staff. But that is what works best for us, eighty-five fifteen, which is very creative. So I'm very happy to have Basavika so that we could actually explore and, and kind of go out of the box and not say, because at first we were afraid to even go beyond the eighty-twenty, but this seems to work for us. Mr. Basavika, would you like to share any numbers with them, any financial numbers?
On the, so what we have here is, when we choose option three, the cost sharing will be eighty-five and fifteen percent. This will also make us compliant with the charging our employees by the incentive rate, which is explained there on the summary. So when it comes to the employer cost, that will be around one-point-five billion for, for the city and hundred forty-five thousand as for our employee share. So we've used this in the past, and it looks like this is a fair share for, for both the city and our employees.
Thank you. Mr. Morgan?
In the future, it would, this would be very helpful, because these are no more than numbers to me. I would love to hear a family or somebody in the city or a fire park firefighter say, hey, these services got some new glasses for my daughter, like to see how it practically rolls out and how it makes sense. I can hear the numbers, I can see them. But to see, to hear people give testimonies about how the actual, how, how the actual insurance, how it actually helps, the difference, so you can show the difference in contrast and comparison. I don't know. I hear what's being said, but I don't know if that's more helpful to a family than the first option or the second option. I wouldn't know, but it would be nice to hear some practical testimony of how it's rolled out for me to make a choice on someone else's insurance compensation that I don't get. So I just want to throw that out.
Thing about this, Councilmember Morgan, is that they have different options.
Okay, okay.
Use the option.
Everyone has a different option.
They can choose. Everyone can choose.
Okay, I, I would just like to hear one of the best options and why they chose it.
Yeah, so some choose HMO because they like how the HMO services work. I myself, I choose the PPO because I want to go to any doctor I want to go to. PPOs like.
That there, that statement there, be closer, okay.
And HMO is kind of restricted to a network, but we still have people that are in that service group. So it just depends on what works for their families.
So it's, it's the à la carte, is, is, if people can choose what they, what they desire, that's cool. I just like to hear again, when I'm voting on this, why people chose what they did, and it makes sense. So, but thank you so much.
Any other question, Mr. Wilcox?
It seems like that conversation went back to the previous, previous resolution, but in, in terms of the, the numbers here, I mean, so the, the eighty-five fifteen works because we have currently employees enrolled in three different programs, and each, and so us paying, you know, the city paying more upfront, that breaks down, I, I mean, these numbers all come out to about one-point-seven million dollars, you know, it's like, you know, for, for each option, but it looks like we're, the, the city is taking on, you know, a hundred seventy, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more than in some of the other options. So this makes sense because of the distribution of people within the different programs, or if there was a different distribution, if more people were in the HMO and less than the PPO three thousand, would another option make more sense? I'm just trying to figure out how that last resolution relates to this one and, and why these numbers make sense.
So, are you still, are you still on the call, Michelle? Yeah, sorry, Reagan, go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I am.
So I can just say something about that. So the first resolution, Councilmember, is about the choices in insurance. And the next resolution is about how we fund those healthcare. So irregardless of what choice our employees make, they will now have to pay fifteen percent of the cost of that particular choice, so if we opt out. So that, that's what we are recommending now is for us to charge our, our employees fifteen percent instead of charging them twenty percent, which is option two, or option one, which is hard cap, which is a fixed amount that the city will have to put in for, for the cost of the healthcare.
So then what I'm getting out of the option three here is that, that's just the city being nice. I mean, the, the other two options are just like, well, yeah, that, that costs our employees more out of pocket to, to, to get healthcare, and so basically we're just stepping up and, and paying more of the cost, so it's not, it doesn't break down because of certain distributions within the programs. It's just like across the board. This is a, a valid judgment by the city administration to say, we want to take, take this off.
Also, I feel like the last, since we've been doing the eighty-five fifteen, our rates have continually, continuously gone down somewhat, and it's kind of the city's way of sharing in that reduction of cost. Am I wrong? Am I wrong to say that, Francis?
No, you're, you're, of course we want to take care of our employees.
All right, I, I, I agree. That's a great thing.
But what I was going to point out is that the reason that the cost seems to have increased for the city is because we have increased our number of employees. So I think that's one of the factors. Am I correct, Michelle?
Yeah, the, the census has absolutely changed. I, I don't know the exact employee count, but I want to say at least fifteen to twenty new employees since we looked at this last year. And in terms of the premium, the fifteen percent that the employee pays, as Kim had mentioned and Reagan had mentioned, there are three different choices of medical plan. So the employee's share will differ per employer, you know, per plan that they choose. If they want to pay a little more for a PPO plan, they're going to have a little more flexibility. However, the HMO may be the most cost-effective at that fifteen percent. So an employee who maybe does not care as much about flexibility in the total network can pick an HMO option. And then we have another option that was grandfathered. So I think it's a combination of a bunch of different items. But yeah, that fifteen percent, again, does change based on what plan the employee is actually picking for themselves and for their family.
This is great, because by, by taking option three, this, this allows some employees to kind of upgrade their, their coverage. So I like that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Any other questions?
The same is awful tool for retention.
Yes.
We now need these things as never before because it's hard to hire. So if you do have this flexibility in your benefits, it, it looks better as well.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Halanga, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously? Council, moving on to the next item?
Actually, before we move on, can I make a motion to amend the, the agenda, Mr. Barr?
Yes, if Council agrees, you may.
Okay, thank you. I would like to move to amend the agenda to move Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash twenty-thirty, which is item K. I would like to move it up to, one moment. I would like to make that item F. And then adjust the rest as needed.
Is there a particular reason you want?
Yeah, we, sorry, we have guests joining for that, and with so many agenda items, it's just hard to tell what time of the night we'll get to them.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to be conscious of their time. It would be Prosecutor Sabat and Assistant Prosecutor Burton Harris.
I'll support.
Thank you.
Council, it's been moved in second that we move twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one dash three, two-thirty, for up to.
In between the cross.
Between, between twenty, twenty-four and twenty-five.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Are there any opposes? Okay, motion has it. Mr. Halanga, would you please make that move? Thank you.
Council, moving on with the agenda, Resolution number twenty-twenty-one dash two-two-two. It is resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti that payment of the Bill of Attorney Scott Berthold in the amount of sixty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars and fifty-three cents is approved for attorney services from May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one to September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Oof.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, discussion, presentation? Mr. Morgan?
I just want to say for the record that we're giving almost seventy thousand dollars to a person who didn't complete the task in which our attorney sought him out for his expertise. And now, over a span of a hundred and eighteen days in which he worked maybe seventy, we're giving seventy thousand dollars out. So I hope, whatever litigation we're going in the future for, I hope we are on a beneficial end to that with this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Jones Chance?
Yeah, I really only have two questions, and one is the rate we're being charged, what we agreed. And the second question is, did he do the work? And those are really the only two questions that I think need to be answered to determine whether or not we pay him. If he did the work as agreed, for the amount agreed, then the honorable thing to do is pay him.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Barr?
Yes, Your Honor and Council. I recommended that we hire this gentleman for the work, and we hired him under a written agreement, and he agreed to do the work a little bit less than the market rate of two-hundred-and-fifty dollars an hour. And when the bill came in, I was, it was more than I had expected, and so I asked my staff to look at it very carefully and go through it. I'm convinced that he did do the work. I believe it will ultimately benefit the city.
Thank you. Does that answer your questions, Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Halanga, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcox?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
No.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one no?
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next Resolution, Resolution twenty-twenty-one dash two-two-three, resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the city seeks to provide a daytime cold weather warming center location for those in need as well as ancillary support services such as food and transportation. And whereas the city owns the Brighthouse, a historic building located at one-hundred Market Street, Ypsilanti, Michigan, four-eight-one-nine-seven, and desires to use the Brighthouse for a daytime warming center. And whereas Shelter Association of Washtenaw County specializes in providing warming centers and temporary shelter and connections to services in a safe and caring environment, and works with the community to allocate the necessary resources to meet the needs of people who are experiencing homelessness, and is willing to work for the city in providing warming centers, services for the city. And whereas the city is interested in working with the, with S A W C for S A W C to provide staffing to support a daytime warming center at the Brighthouse Monday through Thursday from eight AM through six PM. And whereas S A W C has provided a quota fifty-one thousand, fifty-one-eight-hundred thousand out, fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars to provide Brighthouse Warming Center services. fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars to provide Brighthouse warming center services and the city of Ypsilanti is agreeable to pay SAWC to support this cost. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves the memorandum of understanding as provided.
No move.
No move, support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments, discussion, presentation? Mr. Morgan, with your hand up?
Just, uh, yes, in the, uh, and just in, uh, in, in section one, what, in part one of the agreement where it says a full time that was stretched out until it said an adequately trained staff. And I just wanted to, for the record, wanted to note what that meant. And inadequately trained, does that mean first aid, CPR, bloodborne pathogens and cultural diversity training for that person who's going to be heading up that, um, position at, in the warming center?
Yeah, good evening, city council, and thanks for the question, Councilman Morgan. I, um, don't have Dan with us here from the counter, uh, county shelter association to answer the questions about what adequately trained means. This agreement was devised by Attorney Byrne, myself, and then the edits were provided by the county shelter association. And so, um, I do know that first aid training is part of the adequately trained qualification for the county shelter association and staff. I do believe that's required for the volunteers that are mentioned here too, uh, with ongoing volunteer and management support. Uh, I don't know about diversity and equity, um, training, to be honest. I would imagine that's part of what they do because, um, you know, it's, it's something that they've mentioned before in terms of the populations that they serve. And so, um, I'm fairly confident that is part of, of what adequately trained means, but I, I can't say for sure. I'd have to double check with Dan.
Yeah, because I CPR, bloodborne pathogens, dealing with different fluids and stuff in that environment. I just wanted to see, uh, I just wanted to know what that meant, but thank you for that loose interpretation of what you think it means. If there's any information about what it actually means, send it to me.
Yeah, I can only tell you contextually, but I'll confirm with, uh, Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wilcoxen?
Um, I have a question about, uh, page seven of the MOU. Uh, the wording seems a little ambiguous to me and I want to make sure this is clear. Um, in the resolution, it says fifty-one thousand dollars, but in, uh, item number thirty-two, it says city will pay, uh, fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars for services described on above on a monthly basis as invoice. So are we paying fifty thousand for total? Are we paying fifty thousand dollars on a monthly basis?
It is not a monthly basis. It is total and that should be edited to read that.
All right, so I make a motion to edit that.
Yes. Thanks for catching that, Mr. Wilcoxen. Was that the only thing?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, Mr. Jones Chance, is your hand up?
Yeah, I'm assuming what this amendment would be, would be for fifty-one thousand eight hundred dollars in monthly installments. Um, and then is that only through the period? Through the period that the center is open or is that going to be, you know, how are we dividing that up by how many months?
Mr. Barr, speak to the structure of payments within the MOU.
Yes, certainly. The, the intention is that the, the total amount will be paid in equal monthly, uh, installments during the term of the agreement. That would be normally understood, but we can add that language.
Thank you.
Um, yeah, and then, uh, the only other comment I have just, uh, to, uh, thank Christopher Jacobs and, um, and Dan, and I think, uh, CJ met with us one time and, uh, also, um, Patton Doyle, because I know he whipped the votes and BDA to get this done. So thanks to all of you.
Thank you, Brett.
Yes, thank you, Christopher and others.
Yes, thank you. This is something. Thank you, thank you. Uh, also, this is something that's been long needed and we've talked about it for having a warming center for some time. So thank you very much for following through. Any other questions or comments? If not, would you call the role, please, Mr. Halanga? You're muted. Mr. Halanga, you're muted.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next resolution. Resolution twenty twenty-one dash two two four, resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti. Whereas the Cross Street Bridge has been identified as being in need of replacement. And whereas due to the level of complexity involved in such replacement and its funding, pre-planning is required. And whereas the information supplied in such a study will help to ensure a smooth replacement process. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approved proposal entitled Cross Street Bridge Replacement Study with a cost of sixty-two thousand three hundred dollars. That the cost for design engineering for this project be expended from account number two zero two dash seven dash nine zero seven eight dash eight one eight dash zero zero, and that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign this proposal, subject to review and approval by the city attorney. And that the city manager is authorized to sign any order, any change orders that may be needed to complete the project, subject to review and approval by the city attorney.
No move.
I support.
It's been moved and supported. Any presentation?
Uh, yes, counsel. Um, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Uh, so as everybody knows, we've been inspecting the Cross Street Bridge on a regular basis, on an annual basis, actually, and consistently over the past couple of years. Our engineers have recommended we pursue replacement options. Um, as part of that pursuit of replacement options, it does behoove us to try and nail down the timeline and the exact scope of the project as closely as possible. And that's what this feasibility study would do. It would help us ensure that we are effectively putting the bridge in the right place as because it is over the river and things can change over time, that it is sized with the correct amount of traffic and the type of traffic that we want to see there. That, um, oh, we have as many details, uh, firmly established as possible before we move on to the design phase and, uh, as we pursue funding for it. So this will help us along the process to getting it replaced.
Thank you so very much. Any questions or comments from council? Mr. Morgan?
Yeah, one question. Thank you, Bonnie. Um, for you say it's been, the Cross Street Bridge has been like being studied annually. I don't know how many years, but have they gathered enough information over those concurrent? Uh, over a year, I, I don't know how many, could you just give me like ten years, would you say? How many years annually have this been studied?
So we've been inspecting it annually for the, at least the past three years that I'm aware of. Before that, it was likely on a biennial basis. Uh, one of the challenges though is that they inspect the existing bridge as it is now for its physical condition. They don't, um, they don't do the other sort of traffic studies, the topographic surveys, um, those sorts of, um, studies as part of their annual inspections. They're just trying to see how the bridge is doing at that precise moment in time.
Okay, this is much more involved in detail. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen?
Yeah, last time we talked about bridges in general, um, this in conjunction with the, the Forest Street Bridge. Um, I had the impression that, uh, the pilings for this were not in such bad shape. Now, um, from the OHM letter, it seems like that, uh, may not be the case anymore.
So they've been recommending replacement consistently for the past, uh, I want to say three years, um, at least since twenty nineteen, right? Like, was this twenty eighteen? Um, they have noted cracks in several beams, issues with the expansion joints and various other joints. Um, issues with portions of the railings, uh, failing, needing repair, uh, spalling and leaching in the concrete. So they are recommending at this point, partially due to the physical condition of the bridge, but also partially doing, due to the shifting of the riverbed, um, of over replacement.
Do we know what's causing the riverbed to shift?
Not to the best of my knowledge. I assume it's just doing what rivers do over time.
It's been in need of some real work for some time, Mr. Wilcoxen. Yes. I see, uh, come, uh, I see Ms. Somerville shaking her head, yes.
Oh, yes, it's right in my front yard.
I know, yes. So, okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Halanga, would you call the role, please? Thank you, Ms. Wester. Appreciate your, uh, all the work that you do.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Council moving on to the next resolution. As the agenda was amended, that will be resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two three zero. Result by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas chapter seven, section seven dash five two of the city of Ypsilanti City Code provides that one thousand for each marijuana facility application will be used promote social equity to negatively impacted communities by promoting advocacy around criminal justice issues related to marijuana prohibition. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti has accumulated twenty-five thousand dollars in revenue earmarked for this purpose. And whereas the Ypsilanti Police Advisory Commission through passage of resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one has requested the city of Ypsilanti develop a policy in assisting with criminal record expungement. And whereas someone with a marijuana conviction may apply for expungement. And whereas the Washtenaw County Prosecutor's Office has been assisting individuals seeking to expunge their records. And whereas the city of Ypsilanti would like to aid this program through financial contribution. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti direct the city attorney to draft an agreement between the city of Ypsilanti and the Washtenaw County Prosecutor's Office to provide funding for expungement specific to charges as a result of marijuana prohibition. Be it further resolved that the city of Ypsilanti provide blank to aid this program.
Somerville, support.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, thank you. And I, uh, do, I am aware that we do have some guests to talk to us about this, so I'd like now to call upon, uh, um, first of all, welcome, uh, Mr. Savit, Ms. Burton Hair, Mrs. Burton Harris and Mr. Welch. And ask which of the three of them would like to talk to us first?
Given that I am off mute, and I saw Victoria went back on mute, uh, I guess, I guess I will, I will start. So first of all, uh, thank you, thank you, mayor and city council. Thank you for having us here tonight and, uh, thank you for putting forward this, this resolution. Uh, I'll just give a little bit of background, uh, here. On April eleventh of this year, a new law went into effect that dramatically expanded, uh, the number of people who can seek to expunge their old criminal records, uh, in the state of Michigan, which means that those records are non-public and, uh, you know, it can't prevent somebody from obtaining housing or obtaining jobs or securing public benefits or educational benefits. Uh, for, for many people, it's really a life-changing opportunity to shed themselves of those, uh, past criminal records. Um, un- unfortunately, uh, the, the legislation, though it's, though it's great, has a couple of, uh, hurdles with respect to cannabis in particular. Um, although cannabis is of course legal now in the state of Michigan, the legislation did not provide for automatic expungement of old criminal records, meaning that there are people that are still carrying around criminal records for things that are now legal. Uh, and it continues to hold folks back, uh, from, uh, moving forward in life, uh, again, due to something that, that, that is now legal. The other thing is that, uh, there is still an application process, uh, required. And though cannabis, uh, cannabis expungements, uh, can automatically come, can, can come off your record immediately. There's no waiting period unlike for other offenses. You still have to go through a process by which you get certified copies of the court transcripts, which costs money. Uh, you have to pay a fifty dollar fee to the Michigan State Police, and that can add up, particularly given that, uh, the number one reason that people are looking to expunge their old criminal records is to get a job, uh, and to earn more money. It's a catch twenty-two. Uh, if you don't have a job, you're unlikely to be able to come with the, with the money to pay to get your record expunged. Um, but, uh, if you can't get your record expunged, uh, then that may be holding you back from a job. So what we've been doing in the Washtenaw Prosecutor's Office, working with partners such as Legal Aid, uh, the Michigan Advocacy Program and Michigan Works, is we've been able to, uh, offer free assistance with expungement. Uh, we've been having expungement fairs and taking applications, uh, assisting people with getting those records, um, getting everything in from the Michigan State Police. Uh, and we've got pro bono attorneys through our partners that actually walk them all the way through the, 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 the process up to the time at which they will appear in front of a judge to get their record expunged. Uh, this has really been, uh, there's been a lot of demand for this. Uh, our office has, uh, assisted, uh, nearly five hundred people since April eleventh with getting their old criminal records expunged. The demand frankly has outstripped my expectations. And we've been able to advertise these services for free, which gets people in the door, um, which gets people to the expungement fairs, uh, which is really a huge selling point for folks. Uh, and we've been using money that was allocated by the state. Uh, but given the tremendous demand for expungement services in Washtenaw County, that money is quickly running out. So, uh, this allocation, uh, is, would be tremendously appreciated and would make a meaningful impact in our coalition's expungement work because what it would mean, uh, quite frankly, is that we would be able to continue to advertise these services as being free, uh, get people in the door, get them started on that process and get them, uh, the life-changing opportunity that is expungement of old criminal records. So, uh, again, I'm grateful to the council for, uh, this proposal and for considering it. Uh, we look forward, if it does pass, to working together in partnership. Uh, and I thank you again for, for having us and for considering this. And I will, uh, turn it over to, uh, my, my, my partner in justice, our chief assistant prosecutor, Victoria Burton Harris.
Good evening. Thank you, Ellie, and thank you to all of you, um, from Mayor, uh, Richardson to all of you on city council. Um, I was pleasantly surprised to see that this was on the agenda, uh, today. And I just want to share with you um, two very quick stories about why, uh, these resources coming to our office are so important. A few months back, we were in Ypsilanti, right across from the bus station at, uh, Bellflower. Um, and we were passing out information about expungement. Uh, Bellflower was gracious enough to allow us to use their internet in order to check eligibility and let folks know if they were in fact eligible to have their records expunged by looking up their criminal record. And I ran into a man, it was his fiftieth birthday. And he said, what you all are doing is incredible and we've never seen it in this community. And this is my fiftieth birthday and the best birthday present that you could ever give me is to tell me that I'm finally eligible to separate myself from my past, from the person that I was thirty years ago. And I almost shed a tear and Ellie will tell you, I'm a crybaby. Um, I cry very easily. I have a lot of empathy for folks. And to hear a man and to see him and to even hold his hand, uh, on his fiftieth birthday and to hear him say how life-changing this opportunity was for him, it meant the world to me. This past weekend, we had a full service. And when I say full service, I mean everything from background checks to fingerprinting, to application drafting, um, to having court clerks available to pull, uh, your court file. We had all of that at the, um, uh, Resource Learning Center, uh, the Learning Resource Center, excuse me, um, over at the Service Center, um, on, um, right off of, uh, Washtenaw where the sheriff's office is. Uh, we had that expungement event with several of our partners, including Matt, um, including the sheriff's office, including the Public Defender's Office, including Michigan Works. And I ran And I ran into yet another person. It was not his birthday. But he found me and he said, I want you to help me find the director of this unit. And he called her by another name. And I said, well, her name is Frances. He says, yes, I want to find her because I want to personally thank her. She's the reason why I'm here. And I took him to her and I watched him hold her hand and sincerely let her know the difference that this unit has made in his life. And this man had to have been at least fifty-five or sixty years old. And he said that he had been trying to, again, distance himself from his past as a young person. And it had been holding him back. And he was in fact eligible. And not only had he been eligible, but his application from a previous expungement fair had already gone through and he was well on his way. He only showed up not because he needed us that day, but because he wanted to thank us in person. That's just how much this work meant to him that we are doing, not in our office, because this is not something that we own. This is what we're doing at the community in Washtenaw County. And it does my heart good to be able to hear those stories because that's what we all are about. When we're, and you know, signing up to be public servants, that's exactly what we are. We are servants to the people. And to be able to have people come up to us and say, you are serving me and serving me well, and I thank you for that. It's, it's, it's all the reward that we need. So thank you from the bottom of my heart for allowing us to continue to help these folks in Washtenaw County. You know, without your help, we may not be able to do as much as we're going to do. So just thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Welch, or I didn't know if you were wanting to say something.
Sir, Mr. Welch is here for another item.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right. Okay, thank you.
Very quickly, I apologize to cut you off, Mayor. The resolution will need to be amended to enter into a dollar amount that in the be it further resolved.
Okay.
Out of the twenty-five thousand.
Could we have, could we have someone to make that a motion, to make that amendment? Ms. Somerville?
Should we, do we have to do that right now, Andrew, or should we have the discussion first?
Even, it's at the pleasure of council. I just wanted to make counsel where that will be needed in order for this resolution to actually do anything.
Okay, I move to, one second, let me pull it up. I moved to add twenty-five thousand dollars in the blank to aid the program.
Of support?
It's been moved and supported. Counsel. Mr. Wilcoxen, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Savitt and Ms. Burton Harris for, for being here. And thank you to Annie for getting this on the agenda. This is important work and I appreciate the stories. The thing that I
Mr. Wilcoxen, excuse me. Are your comments on the amendment to the motion or the motion itself?
To the motion itself.
Okay, we need to vote on the amendment. Amendment first, yes. Is there any question or discussion on the amendment, Ms. Somerville?
Yeah, um, I was, wasn't sure if I was going to make the motion for the full amount, but I just want to, I did so because the only other time we've allocated money from this fund for social equity, we allocated five thousand dollars to the Washtenaw County Reentry Pilot. And I think that we can consider resources next year that are put into this fund for that program and focus on this one during this year with what's in that account for now. Primarily because we've already supported that effort once and we haven't supported expungement yet. And expungement was explicitly listed in our social equity section of our recreational marijuana ordinance. So I just wanted to point out if anybody had concerns about why go the full amount. Last time, we only put five thousand dollars towards the reentry project. And this is the first time we're putting money towards expungement. And I just feel strongly that because it's so explicit in our ordinance, we should spend the full amount.
Thank you. Mr. Jones Chance?
I have an issue with the amendment without having any discussion. The issue is we don't know how many people that we will serve. We don't know on average how much it costs to serve them. So we really don't know whether or not this money will all go to serving them or if there will be extra or if it's not enough. So I, I do have some questions then to that end. I, I think Mr. Savitt went over a little bit what the, what costs people incur on average. What are the expenses that, you know, providing this for free would, would cover?
Mr. Savitt, would you please respond to that one?
Sure, 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 happy to. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Jones Chance for, for the question. So there are several mandatory costs associated with expungement. One is the fifty-dollar per application fee that needs to be paid to the Michigan State Police. And, you know, depending on how many records you have, that plus the cost for certified copies of court transcripts can add up. Courts are typically charging eleven dollars per page for certified copies of court records. So, you know, that, that can range from eleven dollars to, in a lot of cases, depending on how, how, how big the transcript is. It can be a, a couple of hundred dollars. So it really varies by the person, but these are costs that are fixed and baked into the program. And that we have been using the allocation made by the state government, the one-time allocation to Michigan Works to cover. One, one thing I just will note is that, as I mentioned at the outset, that money is quickly running out. That is because Michigan Works Southeast serves a variety of counties in Southeast Michigan. And, you know, a, a lot of folks are leaning into this. In addition, we've, we've frankly had much more demand for expungement than, than we thought we would have rolling this out. And, you know, candidly, this, the demand keeps growing. When word of mouth spreads, more people seem to show up to try to get their criminal records expunged. So those are the, the sort of baked-in costs that, 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 that this allocation would cover.
Mister, no, please, so Mister Helanga.
If we could, could we come back to me? I, I wasn't quite finished.
Okay, I will. I think Mister Helanga might has a point of order or something.
I, I have just a clarification to this. This, this resolution only would allocate the funding and direct the city attorney to draft an agreement, agreement with the Washtenaw County Prosecutor's Office. So this agreement will have to come back for council approval. So that would, that would be able to review the more specifics at this time. This would just start the process and allow funding for that process.
All right, thank you. Mr. Jones Chance?
Okay, so my other concern related to the dollar amount is that I would like to see this funding, our funding being used to support our citizens. So I, I would like our funding to be used to help expunge the records of citizens of Ypsilanti. And if possible, I would also like to see, I know this maybe not possible, but would like to see some voter registration efforts included as well. So based on what you're seeing at the fairs, do you think that we could use this entire budget on Ypsilanti citizens, you know, within the period?
So, so, so what I, what I will say, and, you know, we, we, we've had several fairs and they've, and they've mostly been on the east side of the county. But the, the vast majority of people that have applied for expungement do come from Ypsilanti City and Ypsilanti Township, you know, and folks, folks will sort of cross city township lines to come to expungement affairs. But, you know, it's consistent with what we see in our office. We, we just get more criminal charges out of the east side of the county and, and that's been the case for probably decades now. So there, there, there is a significant demand on the east side of the county in terms of breaking it down between the township and the city. I admit that I haven't done that analysis, but I do know that I'd say the, the sizable majority of folks that are applying for expungement do come from four eight one nine seven, four eight one nine eight zip codes.
I would say that I would, so thank you. I would support a, you know, a fully funding with, with the entirety of the twenty-five thousand dollar budget. If we used a drawdown system so that if there were any funds left over that we could, we could get those back. And I guess when we get to the portion about the overall, that we have some stipulation that we are serving citizens of Ypsilanti and not the entire rest of the county.
Would you like to add that as a friendly?
Not as a part of this amendment.
No, not as a part. You would like to make a second, separate amendment, okay? All right, Mr. Wilcoxen?
When it's me?
I, I'll defer to Annie because she's had her hand up on her.
Great, okay, so.
And first, Mr. Wilcoxen, that's why I called you, but Ms. Somerville, go ahead.
Yeah, just to clarify, the funds that were set aside for social equity are only allowed to be used on cannabis-related things such as expungement, other programming related to undoing harms related to the war on drugs as it pertains to cannabis convictions. We would not be able to use the funds on voter registration. Additionally, there was nothing in our social equity ordinance when we opted in stipulating only used, to be used on City of Ypsilanti residents. Personally, I would like to not use that stipulation. When we chose to opt in to recreational sales, we took that effort to undo the harms caused by the prohibition on cannabis. And I think that Ypsilanti as a whole includes Ypsilanti Township and other surrounding areas with people who consider Ypsilanti their home. That's not in our ordinance, but our ordinance states is to use the funding on expungement related to prior cannabis convictions. It does not stipulate City of Ypsilanti residents, so I would like to request that for my amendment, that's not included. And I would like to stick with the, the straight twenty-five thousand. We've previously, as I stated before, have only allocated five thousand dollars. That was to the reentry pilot for all of Washtenaw County for cannabis-related crimes. And I would like to continue that effort. And again, just want to reiterate, we can't use it for anything else.
Okay, Mr. Wilcoxen, then Mr. Morgan.
This is interesting. I, I appreciate Mr. Jones Chance's comments, you know. Paying for, you know, as, as, you know, the township didn't opt in. They don't, they're not, I don't know how much the township is contributing to their own citizens being in this expungement. First of all, I'm, I'm kind of chagrined by the fact that the state legislature didn't provide enough money to, to fund this program. And here, a small city that has a, a very small budget is, is, is coughing up cash do what the state hasn't done. And I think that's shameful. That was my earlier comment. It's just like, here, here's Ypsilanti picking up the tab for the state because they don't fund the programs. And, 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 you know, why they, they didn't make this automatic is, is beyond me. I, I have a question about whether, you know, they're going to pick up the tab at some points. But I, I do see the point in having this be, you know, the earmarked for priority for, for Ypsilanti city residents, you know, the, I, I don't know what's going on in the township, but, you know, they decided not to opt in. And they don't have this kind of program either. But I, I think it is important. And, and, you know, probably some of those people in the township did live in the city when, when they got the violations. And maybe they got the violations in the city, but who knows? But, but I do think it's, it's, it's an accounting issue and prioritizing our own residents.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Morgan, you moved around on my, on my screen. Was your hand up?
It was. You know I'm slippery.
Yes, you are.
I was like, thank you, Councilmember Wilcoxen for bringing up the, the farce of an equity program in which was created by the state. But I want, I want to allude to what prosecutor, the prosecutor said when he says, it's been decades trends of convictions coming out of four eight one nine seven, one nine eight, which, which I support. What Councilmember Jones Chance was saying about earmarking it because it's been decades and histories of convictions happening here. This is where the most concentration should be and it should be. But I do think the biggest, because what, you mentioned there was over five, since April eleventh, there were five hundred people with expungement. I'm wondering what's the total cost for five hundred people since the eleventh? There has to be some number to it. And can we add that or work with that number? Is it, however that's configured? And, and this is lastly, the sad thing about all of this is the money is going right back into the system. It's going right back to the, the, the system that created the convictions. This is a horrible cycle. But again, I'm glad this money that's earmarked to help people, and I think it should help people in our region. Not to say the county in itself doesn't suffer from some of these things. But again, it, it, it needs to be some clear, specific solutions and plans for expungement in our city specifically, since we feed the machine of the county during, during our probation, all these other costs. But saying that, um, is there, and I haven't heard it, maybe I'm listening, the program already exists and we're just putting money to continue funding it. Is that what I'm hearing? Does the program already exist and we're earmarking funds to keep it going? Or we're helping recreate it?
Can I jump in, please?
Please, let Mr. Elliot, Mr. Savitt.
We're talking about my amendment.
Well, but he's asking Mr. Savitt a question. Okay, Mr. Savitt?
Sure, yes, yes, the program already exists. And, you know, we, we, we have been working since, since, since spring at expungement fairs to get people in the door. The, the, the real, we are one of only two jurisdictions in the state, Washtenaw County and Detroit, that is able to offer these services entirely for free. And that's a result of the Michigan Works allocation and the partnerships that we've built up here. So yes, the program already exists. There, there is going to come a time in the, in the near future. And I will say that, that because I'm just focused on Washtenaw County, I don't know how quickly Michigan Works is drawing down the money in other parts of, parts of their jurisdiction. But where the allocation that was made to, to Michigan Works to fund this initially will run out, which will, you know, either, either we get more money in or we're not able to offer this for free anymore. And, you know, in, in my experience, when you have free with an asterisk, free except for the fifty-dollar application, free, free except for certified copies of court transcripts, you're just going to get far fewer people in the door because, you know, really free is really free and that attracts people. Free with an asterisk is, is a lot less appealing. So, so, so that's, I hope that answered your question, Councilmember Morgan.
Mr. Savitt, is there a ballpark figure that it costs five hundred people to get their records expunged since April eleventh?
At least twenty-five thousand dollars. And I say that because, because there's a fifty-dollar application fee that comes with every single expungement. That's statutory, it's mandatory, you can't waive it. So that, if my, and I'm a lawyer, not a mathematician, but I think I can do five, five hundred times, times fifty. So I think I did that right. So at least twenty-five thousand. Certainly, it's, it's north of that because we have been paying for certified copies of court transcripts. So, you know, whether it's, whether it's forty thousand or, or, or what, you'd have to look back through the individual cases, but it's at least twenty-five thousand.
I believe Mr. Barr. Let us see him. He has something. And then to Ms. Somerville, then Mr. Wilcoxen, and then Mr. Jones Chance, Mr. Barr.
Well, thank you for this discussion because it will help me in drafting the agreement. I'd like to point out to council that money is fungible. And if the city pays twenty-five thousand dollars for Ypsilanti residents, that will free up money for other residents in the county. But I'm glad for the discussion and I need all the direction you can give me.
Thank you, Ms. Somerville.
Uh, yeah, I just, I pulled up the language from the ordinance and I just want to mention that it's general language. So in an effort to advocate for the amendment that I put up, it is for community education and outreach on adult use marijuana as it relates to prohibition in general. There are people who lived in the City of Ypsilanti when they got their crimes and were, you know, convicted that no longer might not live here because they were priced out and moved to the township. I just think that's wrong to dictate where the funds go. It's the same county, it's It's the same county, it's the same crime, we all opted into an ordinance that used general language, saying that we would um, address social equity. With expungement. So it, that's what we opted into, and it's the only thing that we can use the funds on is is cannabis-related things.
Okay, uh, Mr. Jones Chance, I think I called Mr. Wilcoxen, and then you. I think that was the order.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a question about, you know, who else is uh, coughing up cash to do this? And what other communities are are contributing to this? Um, you know, is is the township, um, you know, there's a uh, question for Mr. Savit or or Ms. Burton Harris is like. Are other um, jurisdictions uh, contributing to this this effort? Or is Ypsilanti the only, the only uh, jurisdiction offering this up?
Um, sure, sure, so uh, so so a couple of of things. A, of course, the county is, uh, the uh, the county commission is 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 funding the unit, funding uh, the positions needed. Uh, to facilitate these uh, the the these expungements, um, and have been since uh, since since February. The City of Ann Arbor, in addition, through uh, through their cannabis uh, funds, uh, allocated money to be used towards um. Both diversion from the criminal legal system as well as expungement, and on the expungement side of things. Uh, the way that that money is being spent is to dedicate part of probation's time uh, at the City of Ann Arbor. To uh, help uh, help pull these court records and get them uh, moving even faster through the system. So um, the and and, you know, that's that that's really invaluable, actually, because the fifteenth district court um, has has multiple judges and and is a particularly busy court. In uh, in 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 our county. Uh, I I I will note too that there, wh- what we've seen is there is a lot of crossover here. Uh, so it it there, there are often Ypsilanti residents that may have a conviction out of Ann Arbor or out of Ypsilanti Township, or vice versa. You know, an Ann Arbor resident, Ypsilanti Township resident, uh, may have multiple convictions arising from different district courts. So um, uh, and the City of Ann Arbor's uh, kick-in was very, was very broad. Uh, it encompassed not just uh, the fifteenth district court, but anybody that really touches uh, the City of Ann Arbor. So so um, that's that's how they structured their um, their contribution towards this uh, towards this effort. They are the only other jurisdiction of which I am aware uh, at a sub-county level that has uh, put in uh, financial resources.
Mr. Jones Chance, thank you, Mr. Savit. Mr. Jones Chance.
Yeah, I mean, I would say that uh, you know, the scales of equity here aren't entirely balanced, and, you know, it is as maybe, you know, Ann Arbor decided to contribute very broadly. And, you know, I I would say that that doesn't mean that we are required to. Um, our ordinance may be very general, but I think it is assumed that we have a duty of care to our own residents. Um, and so I do think that we should limit it to citizens of Ypsilanti, and I do think that. I would like to uh, propose an amendment that, uh, a friendly amendment that um, we provide up to twenty five thousand dollars to aid the program. And that uh, the balance, if any, uh, be returned to the city.
Okay, uh, Ms. Uh, Somerville, would you accept that friendly amendment?
Can you repeat that again, Brian?
Yes, at the City of Ypsilanti, provide up to twenty five thousand dollars to aid the program and the balance, if any, which it sounds like there wouldn't be, uh, be returned to the city. And then we can use it to fund more of the program next year, or whatever.
Is Reagan still on the call? Maybe Clerk Linga can answer this, um.
I'm here, sorry.
No, that's okay. At the end of the year, the money that is in the social equity fund remains in the social equity fund until it's used. So each year, whatever we acquire from the permits stay in that fund?
Yes, yes, so what we do is we earmark, it it's not part of a, like a revenue, it's more of like an escrow account in the city funds. So we just keep track of them, so if we don't use them, it stays in the fund. Did I answer your question, sorry?
Yeah, 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 no, thank you. Um, all right, yeah, support.
All right, so Mr. Hilinga, would you read the motion as the?
It was proposed as a friendly amendment. It was proposed. So Councilmember Somerville agreed to it. Councilmember Wilcoxen, do you agree to the friendly amendment?
I have a question about um, this, this for for Mr. Jones Chance. So. Your, your friendly amendment just says that if if it doesn't get used, it comes back to us. But is is it implied in your friendly amendment that this is only for Ypsilanti residents? Because if we give them twenty five thousand dollars, I'm sure they can use the whole thing, so the, you know, that, I I'm just asking. If that was your intent.
Uh, yes, I I think this would have to be a process, though. Um, I couldn't propose that until, so it it may fail.
So you want to hold that as a separate amendment?
I think I, I think I have to.
Yes, you would. This, this friendly amendment is only to that last section regarding how, to what amount this will be funded.
Okay, uh, sure, I will agree to that.
Okay, then, then that is the amendment. So the amendment now reads. That's up to twenty five thousand to aid the program, and the balance be returned to the city. So it would be fully read as be it for the result that the City of Ypsilanti provides up to twenty five thousand dollars to aid this program and the balance be returned to the city.
Yeah, actually, I have a question about that friendly amendment, Brian. Uh, what's the timeline on that? Just a year?
I think it's as long as the program, so my guess is it will all be used, from what I'm hearing.
Okay, that's why I wanted to make sure. It just seems silly to um, like, have to come back to it every year, so I just wanted to make sure.
They do report this.
Okay, so the motion has been moved, it was seconded, and it was a friendly admit, uh, amendment was added.
Mm-hmm.
And properly um, seconded, so agreed upon. Um, yes, Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I'm speaking to the amendment that I made. I just want to point out to other folks on council. Um, I think it's important for us, again, not to stipulate um, what's jurisdiction. Um, primarily because that's going to require a ton of additional hoops. Um, and as I stated before, someone who was convicted in Ypsilanti could no longer live in the City of Ypsilanti. I feel very strongly that we should be able to still utilize these funds to help those people, um.
Okay, but that's not part of this, that's not.
This is part of my amendment, that's what the money is for.
It's not part of the motion, though.
The motion is my amendment for twenty five thousand dollars.
The amendment, this, the the amendment is where people live is not included in the amendment. We are solely focused upon the amendment now for up to twenty five thousand dollars. And any that is not used will be returned to the city. That's what we're focused on right now. So if we can call a vote on that, then we can uh, move on to the other stipulations. So um, Mr. Hilinga, would you call the, a vote on the amendment, please?
On the amendment, Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, thank you. Now, we are back to the original. Motion that has been amended. Any further discussion on that, on the motion? Would you read the full um, motion, the full?
What was approved is, what was just approved as the amendment is.
Not the amendment, but the entire, so that we're back to voting on.
Do you want me to read the entire resolution again?
Not the, not the entire resolution, but could you just make it concise? That we're voting on, uh.
You're voting on the resolution with the amendment.
With the amendment, yes, okay. I just wanted that, make that clear, yes, so. All right, uh, Ms. Somerville.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to stipulate that this program is used for um, Ypsilanti residents and people who received their conviction in the City of Ypsilanti. Before.
It's been moved and seconded, discussion. Mr. Wilcoxen.
Hey, Mayor, um, uh, Mr. Savit, another question for you. Um, how hard is it to track that? I mean, that seems like a fairly simple thing. I mean, if it, either the conviction's in the city or the person resides in the city, that is all information that is taken in upfront. Uh, without any research by anybody to to confirm that, right?
Yeah, that uh, that 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 should not be uh, too difficult to track. You gotta uh, put your address down anyway, and we we see what court the conviction is coming from. So uh, that 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 should not be all that, all that difficult to track.
So that's not going to add cost to the system to to do that, or any kind of uh, extra hurdle for for somebody to get um, service?
No, no, I mean, it's 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 another step in the process, but but it's not one, quite candidly, that I think would be particularly onerous. Uh, it's just another thing to 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 check off to see if we're able to use a particular funding source.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jones Chance.
On the amendment, I would say I support the amendment. It sounds like a good compromise. Seems like all parties are dissatisfied, so I would sup- I'll support the amendment.
I want to call a question.
Mr. Morgan.
Oh, sorry.
You called the question already.
No, Mr. Morgan's hand was up before I.
There was a motion to call the question. Is there support on, is there support on the motion?
Wow, I, in the midst, Mr. Wilcoxen was not.
This motion has been moved and supported. We have to call the roll on calling the question on the amendment.
Okay, even though the person that called the question was not recognized?
They, a motion was made.
I.
No, I'm just, I'm I'm asking that because it's a point of order that I would like to know for, not just for now, but going forward, so.
That is the purpose of calling the question is to stop debate.
And I know, but the person doesn't, my question is, the person that is, that calls the question does not have to be recognized. That's my question right now. Mr. Barr, could you answer that for me, please?
Yes, yes, Your Honor. In this case, there's no clear question, but I think uh, the council can solve this. Uh, what, it's up to the clerk, but I think the clerk is right, but I think the council can allow discussion, the little discussion before that, calling the question if it's vital. So it's really up to the council.
Okay, but no, my question is, the person calling the question does not have to be recognized by the chair, or does that person? That's my question.
Your Honor, I I believe that the the person calling the question does not have to be recognized, but I will double-check that.
Okay, fine, I I I accept your answer to that. That was my question on that, so, okay. Uh, Mr. Uh, uh. Hilinga, Mr. I see Mr. Wilcoxen's hands up, so I don't know, he's called the, he called the question.
I called the question. I didn't meet, I I didn't see uh, Councilmember Morgan's hand up, and I apologize to you guys for jumping in on that. I just wanted to move on with this long agenda, but if if people are okay with comments for this, I'm.
We're gonna stick to the order.
All right.
Because people do that.
No problem.
All right, thank you.
No problem. I got my question answered. I just needed to know if people calling the question needed to be recognized. Okay, Mr. Hilinga, please call the roll on the amendment.
On, this is on calling the question.
Oh, okay, calling the question, okay.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
I abstain.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
No.
Motion carries with five yes, one no, and one abstention. On the amendments, which I will read the amendment now, that the funds be used for Ypsilanti residents and those convicted in the City of Ypsilanti. Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
No.
Councilmember Morgan.
No.
Councilmember Simmons.
Can you come back to me, please?
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Motion carries with five yes and two no.
Okay, thank you. May we have a a vote on the resolution that is before amended with two amendments?
Okay, Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Savit, and uh, Ms. Ms. Burton Harris. Thank you very much for coming and joining us tonight. Appreciate you.
That, tha- thank you all so much, and uh, we're we're looking forward to uh, to 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 work with you. It's greatly appreciated. We're gonna do.
Thank you.
A lot of work, so.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, uh, council people.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution, Resolution Number twenty twenty one dash two two five. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ypsilanti, whereas the City of Ypsilanti seeks to implement policies that protect the public health. And provide for economic prosperity despite the challenging climate for business due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. And whereas outdoor dining is recognized as a valuable economic development opportunity that consumers have strongly preferred locally since June twenty twenty. Over indoor dining options, and whereas the sidewalk cafe permits issued in twenty twenty one and regulated by ordinance in the City of Ypsilanti. Will expire in November unless otherwise extended by resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves extending the twenty twenty one sidewalk cafe permits to allow restaurants to continue outdoor dining options for patrons until May. Twenty twenty two, once the new application window for twenty twenty two is set to begin.
So move.
Before.
The move to support it. Thank you. Uh, welcome again, Mr. Jacobs. You have something to say to us. Thank you.
Yeah, so we've seen almost this identical resolution come before councils before. It was approved last year and allowed Bobcat Bonnies to do igloos out on North Washington Street. I think there was one or the two, or two other businesses that did um, other kind of enclosed heated outdoor sidewalk cafes as well. And so um, Red Rock was one of them, but they did it behind the building rather than out front on the sidewalk. Uh, given the uncertainty around the COVID nineteen pandemic, um, I think consumers are still looking for options. Um, you know, in those igloos or those heated outdoor sidewalk um, cafes. And uh, as we know, the street closures ended on October fifteenth. Um, but we've been approached again this year about on the side cafes past November, and that is what um, we're asking city council to consider.
You say past November, uh, or?
Yep, November.
When would be the end date?
So it would uh, go up until the next cycle, which begins in May of twenty twenty two.
So it would be, they would be there over the winter?
Yep.
All right, a question for you. Um, I I did hear uh, just um. Today that um, the rate of COVID is up thirty percent here in Washtenaw County. Um, rising, or in the state of Michigan, I guess it is, so, um, is there a consideration for that?
In fact, there is.
Very, that the igloos proved, um, real safe last winter.
Yeah, I don't have any peer-reviewed scientific data to support that. Um, but consumers prefer them as a safer option to indoor dining where they don't have to share the same space with so many other patrons. Um, and they are ventilated in such a way and cleared out in such a way that you're not breathing, breathing in the last, um, patron's air. Um, where they could have contaminated it necessarily. And so it's perceived as a safer option. Um, as you said, COVID is still raging in our community. And this is a measure meant to allow for additional, um, safer options for, for dining.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Mr. Jacobs, Ms. Somerville?
Sorry, I'm like just reading through the summary again. Is it the same, it's the same business?
For Bobcat Bonnies, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I think you said that already, but. Okay, in terms of like, just like sidewalk access, um, I guess, I feel like staff goes out and measures the igloo. Okay, great, thank you.
Yep. We've had to tell before to make sure, so, yeah.
Out of the, all the businesses here in Ypsilanti, how many businesses will this specific resolution benefit? How many restaurants?
I think, uh, three. There could be about three. Red Rock Bay, um, Aubries May, and then Bobcat Bonnies.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones Chance.
But, uh, okay, so a small, 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 small percentage of business owners. Thank.
I mean, they proved popular last winter, so maybe folks are thinking, um, you know, I, I know in Europe, even outside of it being a COVID, you know, precaution, that's a popular dining option. So some folks just kind of prefer the aesthetic of it, and I think other.
Mr. Jacobs, were this, was the city or the individual businesses responsible for the maintenance and snow removal of whatever is on the sidewalk?
Uh, the sidewalk, that's the bu- business owner's responsibility. Yep, they, they have to take care of the frontage. Um, I, I think, you know, although it wasn't widely practiced last winter, we could see, you know, up to ten potentially throughout the city this year.
Thank you.
No problem.
Mr. Jones Chance, did I see your hand up?
I was just saying that I was one of the people that would benefit.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
And it's also for a lot of the smaller folks that just put this out for the first time. It's also easier, you know, not to have to bring it all back in, especially when you're not used to having it. Um, I'm thinking like in Quantrill Latino, like where would they even put it? Like leaving it out might just be easier for folks.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing that, Mr. Uh, Halinga, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one no. Council, moving on to the next resolution, uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-two-six. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas during the twenty-twenty-one budget sessions and the annual review process of the city manager and city clerk. City council instructed staff to develop a process for pay increases for non-union employees that were merit-based, as well as across-the-board cost of living increases, and whereas the city contracted with Kevin Welch to complete a twenty-twenty-one compensation study and to create a merit-based, as well as across-the-board cost of living step increase model. And whereas the model created was based on department head positions, but will be used for all non-union employees going forward. And whereas the city manager and the finance director treasurer will determine in present present to city council amounts set annually to be used for merit-based increases in cost of living adjustments. And whereas city council will approve or deny these increases annually in whole or in part based on the city's financial position. Now therefore be it resolved that the Ypsilanti City Council approves and accepts the twenty-twenty-one compensation study and the non-union merit-based and cost of living step increase model.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Uh, do we have a presentation?
Yes, um, Frances.
Uh, yes, um, good evening once again, Mayor and Council. Um, back during budget, uh, time, this was discussed by, uh, council and council-directed, um, staff to do a compensation study, uh, just to see what the process would be and how um, if a step increase would look. I also, um, had indicated at that time that I would like to do merit-based, um, raises as well, based on performance or meeting goals. And so it took the direction from council and, um, gave it to our HR director. And she contracted with Kevin Welch to, um, develop and to actually study compensations of, uh, the positions that we have, and to develop a plan uh, for how we would implement, um, a cost of living increase and merit increases if we so desire to. Um, Kim, I'll let you take it from here.
Thank you, Frances. Good evening again, council. So I'd like to introduce Kevin Welch to you. He has over thirty years of experience in public sector management and human resources. Um, in fact, he worked for the city of Ypsilanti for a short time as our human resources director. He holds a master of public administration from Eastern Michigan University and is well-qualified to do this study, and so now I will hand it over to Kevin Welch.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for having me, and thank you to, uh, Kim and Frances for their assistance in preparing this report. Um, so, uh, Andrew, is the presentation pulled up?
Uh, yes, there's the one moment. Make sure everyone can see it.
Okay, Andrew, I'll just give you a heads up when to, uh, change the slide. That's good. So, uh, the overall goal of this, uh, um, project was to develop a two-part compensation plan. Uh, part of it would be a merit increase, which you're already familiar with, as well as another component which would compensate employees based on their performance. Um, I mentioned the report in your package. There is a full detailed report. Um, if you've had a chance to read that, there's a lot of details in it. Um, I, I'll, I'll obviously go over the high points of that report for you. Um, the first thing I should note, and I think Frances touched on this a little bit, that what you're gonna see in this report is a couple of examples of, uh, step increases. So just so that you're not shocked when you see it, the increases, uh, percentage increases are, are just by way of example, they're in no way a suggestion that, um, of, of a percentage increase that you're, uh, would be approving along with this, but to make it more realistic, we did include a percentage increase just for the table itself. So, you know, just overall, the goals of a merit-based, um, uh, compensation plan are many. And, you know, just in talking to Kim and Frances, they have a really good understanding of how a system like this would work. Um, and not a lot of employers take this on, but, you know, the, the first first step is understanding how it works and making sure that it's implemented fairly and uh, in, in the best interest of the, of the city as well as the employees. So, you know, it, it, merit compensation can really help you with recruitment efforts. It can help you with employee retention. Uh, obviously employee satisfaction, if employees see that they're being rewarded for their, for their, uh, good work at the at the city. Um, it can also work in employee development. If you have employees that maybe need some uh, assistance through, uh, training and things like that, it can also help there. So, you know, those are the, the major goals of such a system. Um, and again, I'd be happy to answer any questions about the details in the report as, as well as this presentation. So, what I was engaged to do was first to focus on the non-union manager positions. You know, I'll indicate what those were. Obviously, you probably know those already, but I also conducted a market comparison of wages and compensation, which did not include benefits. Um, and I'll go over the results of that, and then develop a new two-part compensation plan, which would include the across-the-board increase that you're familiar with at this point, and a performance-based increase system. Um, and again, as I said, any suggestion of a percentage increase is just by way of example. If you could, uh, move the slide, Andrew. Sorry, I forgot to have you do that. I just talked about those points there. Um, Andrew, if you move the slide one more time. So, these are the positions. There's twelve of them that we, um, considered for this, um, possible change. Um, basically all your management level non-union employees at this point. Next slide. Andrew, so, you know, it's probably important just to talk about your current compensation strategy, which I'm sure you're very familiar with, but most positions have a designated salary range. Um, some need to be updated, which Kim and I and, um, Frances already talked about, that some of the information that we've gathered can be used to update those frankly very easily. And, and the reason you'd want to update those is for recruitment purposes, as well as matching for the, uh, uh, merit-based system. Um, any wage increase would be, obviously have to be approved through the budget process and city council. So, what you're being asked to consider here is really a system, not necessarily a, a, a wage increase. Um, so the current system really affords an across-the-board increase to these employees, which is basically the same percentage increase. Uh, merit-based has not been included. Um, the, the last increase was a two and a half percent for the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two year. Next slide, Andrew. So, as far as the market-based salary survey, we sent out surveys to about twenty-six different communities. Um, and a, and a copy of that survey is included in the full report. So, we sent out to about twenty-six, we received ten back, which wasn't too bad. Um, we, in, in, in how we selected some of the communities was either based on total SEV, budget numbers, number of employees. Um, some within the area, we thought was, would be important to select those. We also pulled information from the MML league, um, salary database to fill some voids that were vacant, and also a couple of communities that did not respond, that did respond to the MML survey. We gathered that information as well. Um, one thing that's good to, to point out is not every, not every city has all the same positions. The positions aren't identical from community to community, so it's the, the more communities that you could have to compare to, the better off your, your data is. So with having twelve to, to look at, that's a pretty good number. Next slide, Andrew. So just getting at the survey results, I apologize if these numbers are real, are rather small, but if, if we take all the positions and compare the total compensation for all of them as compared to the other communities. Um, Ypsilanti's falls about four point three percent lower than the average of all of them. Now, I, I, I say, I, I put a caveat there because no two positions are the same in another community. Some have different responsibilities. Um, and, you know, to do a really uh, position-to-position comparison, if you look at each one of them, the, the percentage differences are, are, are different by position. But overall, it's about four point three percent. For example, if you, to read this table, if you look at the city manager, um, according to this survey, uh, the city manager is paid about four point nine percent lower than the average of the other communities. So currently, city manager is at a hundred and fourteen thousand seven seventy-four. And the, the average of all the other commi- uh, comparable communities is about a hundred and seventeen thousand four eighty-eight. So that's roughly about a four point nine percent. If you look at all the different positions, they range anywhere from two point two percent higher to as much as, um, almost forty percent lower. Now, with that being said, um, if you look at the last few pages of the detailed report, it kind of explains what some of those differences might be caused from. And if you, if, Andrew, if you go to the next slide. For instance, if just, this is just one example, the DPW director, uh, the, the salary currently is eighty-three thousand, but if you look at the community averages, um, they are, uh, about ninety-eight thousand. And that's about a twenty-one percent, uh, difference, meaning that Ypsilanti's wage is about twenty-one percent lower than the average. However, when you look at the individual positions, um, some of the communities, the DPW director may have had the responsibility over not only public works, but also the utility department. So, in that case, that would account for a significant difference in compensation. And to truly line these up, we would probably have to, um, eliminate some of the communities, some of those individual positions, um, to make them more line up with a position that's more identical to, uh, Ypsilanti. Um, and I, I guess at this point in time, I'll pause about the survey itself and see if there's any questions about that. I see there's a question.
Or are we calling it?
Or would you rep, prefer I wait till questions to the end?
Uh, I just have one question about the, uh, the, the choice to, to use, um, salary compensation versus total total, uh, compensation as, as the metric with the other, uh, uh, municipalities.
You know, that's a good point. However, in order to do a total compensation, we would more than likely have to gather information on benefits. Uh, uh, and consider how much employees pay for those benefits at, at the same time, and that was not part of this um, survey. I, I've done those before. And it becomes even more difficult to compare across communities, especially when you consider the, the, you know, there, there's a multitude of various healthcare plans that you might value differently from community to community. And as you saw earlier in the meeting, you need, the city of, or city of Ypsilanti offers two or three different plans, and to put a value on those is pretty difficult. I mean, it can be done, and I've done it before, but that was not part of this project. In, 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 in developing the merit-based plan, we didn't take the data from the market survey to plug in numbers on the merit-based plan, so the, the, this was more of an indication to find out where does, uh, Ypsilanti stand in comparison to some of the other communities, just on a, on a uh, forest-for-the-trees kind of picture at this point in time. But that's a good question and a, and a, and a good comparison to do at some point.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions? With that, Andrew, if you go to the next page. So, the new proposed performance merit-based wage scale, obviously, part of any raise that you would give this group of employees would be based on their performance. And currently, the, the city does use, utilize a performance review process, it would probably require some tweaking to make it a little bit more accountable towards tying their performance to actual compensation. So, employees certainly need to have the proper tools as well as know exactly what is expected of them to, to earn potential increases. And the, the review process is pretty good, but I think it needs a little bit of tweaking to, to strengthen that up. As I said, the performance-based plan would tie employee performance to specific wages or increase in wages along with a across-the-board increase. And again, if, if you approve this either tonight or in the future, you're not, you're not approving a, a wage increase, what you're approving is a process. So, the annual goals for most of the, the staff in this group would be set by the city manager and city council already sets goals and objectives for the, for the city manager and I believe the city clerk. And with that, Andrew, could you proceed one more slide? So, this is what the go back one slide, please. This is what the merit-based scale would look like. Again, these numbers are based on a proposed two and a half, or I shouldn't say propose, an example of a two and a half percent pay for performance and a an additional two and a half across the board. So, in effect, five percent. These are potential increases. Again, city council would have to approve this every year. So, each step represents a, a year for each one of these employees. And in the example of the city manager, the yellow block, which is step three, represents where the city manager is at this point in time. And those are matched up with years of experience in that particular position at the city. The blue would be what would occur in the example if the, if the city manager earned the total five percent. So, as an example, let's say that the city did approve such a step increase and included the two and a half percent pay for performance as well as the, the across the board, the city manager could in effect earn the difference between one hundred and fourteen thousand seven seven four and one hundred and twenty thousand and five hundred. In that one year, part of it would be an across-the-board increase and the other part would be a potential for the merit-based increase. So, that would be up to the city council to assess the city manager's performance in that year and determine how much of that merit base that the city manager earns. And that's the same for every other position. Except in the positions that do not report directly to the city council, those would, those decisions would be based upon the city manager's assessment of each employee. So, in each case where you see the yellow blocks, that's where that particular employee places in the in this grid. For instance, the police chief has been there eight years, going on nine years and is currently at ninety-eight thousand nine thirty-nine. The next year that the police chief has the potential to earn one hundred and three thousand eight eight six, again, based on this example and if the police chief were to meet all goals and objectives that were met. So, this is kind of a living, breathing grid. Every year, the first step drops off and a new step is added to the process. So, every year it's updated to reflect whatever increase the, the city has decided that it would afford to those employees. Andrew, if you can move over to the next slide now. So, again, as an example, the arrow in the green indicates the step where the city manager is currently at one hundred and fourteen thousand seven seven four. And I noticed that one of the next items is a potential increase for the city manager. Though that percentage is not included in this table. So, if that's approved, we, we would have to update this table. The arrow in red indicates what the city manager could earn in the following year, again, based on council approval and
Budget?
Budget, obviously, as well as goals and objectives that are met, that are established by city council.
I have a question.
Yes.
You mentioned about our merit compensation package, I think it's, uh, how it was written, you said it's okay, but it could be better. And your expertise, is it the wording, what would make it more perfect? What would make it better and more credible across the board?
Well, you know, that's a good question. I, I did happen to take a look at the agenda when it was published and I looked at the performance review that you prepare for the city manager and city clerk. I think that format works perfectly because there is a lot of detail that has to be provided on what the employee has performed or not performed. There's also a number ranking system assigned to that particular function of the employee. If you, if, if you compare that to the performance review, just the form that is used for the remainder of the employees, there's not as much room for details. And I don't believe that there's a numbering system that you can equate to, to decide, okay, does this employee deserve no raise? Does this employee deserve the full compensation that's possible to that employee? So, I think the more quantifiable you can make the, the, the review process the better so that it's seen as being fair and objective to the employee and so that the city can accomplish its goals as well.
Thank you. And I don't want to say, I don't want to ask how we let you go, okay? I don't want to ask was the compensation, but thank you so much.
Any other questions about this?
So, I, I have a question. So,
Yes.
This is, I mean, this is important information, right? It's market data. And I understand, you know, maybe it could be refined and more, made more specific. When I think about getting this kind of market data and, 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 you know, seeing kind of where things are at, to me, what seems like to be a next logical step would be then figuring out what is our compensation philosophy? Where do we want to be, you know, in the market, you know, for, for compensating our employees? And, and part of that's going to be driven by budget and, you know, and then like I said, kind of how we view those things, but that seems like that's an important thing that we need to figure out and establish. Because otherwise, it's kind of, you know, I, I mean, are we just aiming for the average, you know, or I mean, what are we, what are we doing here? And so, I don't know, that just seems like a, a next step that would make a lot of sense. And yeah, so anyway, just some comments on that.
I, I agree with you that, you know, the terminology that you would, you could potentially use is, do you want to lag the market? Do you want to meet the market or do you want to lead the market? And that is a decision that you probably should make. Because that drives how you compensate your employees. And, you know, things that the HR department would look at is turnover and job satisfaction. How, how, how much of an, how much of an increase would it take to solve any potential problems that you have like that? So, you know, I do think that, I, I agree with you that that is probably a decision the city should make. Where do you want to place in that spectrum? And, you know, even though I mentioned three different levels, you know, there could be ten different levels that, across a broad spectrum that you, you, you know, you might, for instance, maybe you don't want to lead the market, but because you can't afford it. Or you don't think you need to, but things that play into that could be your benefit levels too. How, how, employees don't necessarily come to a job or stay at a job just simply because of compensation. Could also be tied to what benefit levels you, you offer. What, you know, it also could, could be tied to things like the, the actual job that they have to, have to perform. So, all those things play into that, but I, I agree with you on that.
Yeah. And so I, I think that, that to me is something that, that seems like a important thing that we should, we should do. And, and as you said, right, I think it's important to figure out where we're at in the market and, and right, we can't, we don't have, you know, we're not the richest city in the state, so we're probably not going to lead the market in probably most of these job categories. Hopefully, we can, or, you know, lead it, we might be able to meet it, we might lag it for some too, depending again where we're at, but it's the other stuff we can, you know, that total compensation. And that's where it's, I think, also important for us to tell our employees here, what is that, what does total compensation look like? Which that means not just salary, but everything you're kind of that the city's paying towards, you know, towards you, benefits, you know, retirements, things like that. Because that, that picture looks a lot different than just, you know, you, you know, kind of the salary you earn. I had one more comment to think about this.
While you're thinking about that, just
Yeah.
Something that you talked about earlier today, the percentage of what, what the employees pay percentage-wise for their healthcare benefits. So, if, if I interpreted it correctly, they're paying about fifteen percent.
Yeah.
You know, that's that's something to share with your employees because depending on where other communities are, are, are falling on that decision, that plays into that total compensation and having your employees understand what they pay for their health insurance as compared to others may determine how satisfied they are with their compensation as well and as with their job. So, I, I agree with you a hundred percent that when it comes to compensating your employees, and, and I think I pointed this out in the report, don't just consider the compensation that they receive in their paycheck there, every, every other week or whatever, however often you pay. You, you know, you got to consider the whole package.
Right. Some, I mean, some companies even once a year send their employees kind of a, a little report kind of listing out and explaining, you know, what their total compensation is to just help them understand that piece. And I would guess, I'm not a benefits expert and I certainly don't necessarily have my finger on the pulse of all things, but I have some, some knowledge in this area. And I would think that we're at least meeting the market as, as it relates to municipalities in the state for benefits generally. I don't think we're lagging, I could be wrong. But, but right. And there's other ways you know, obviously that you can increase, you know, job satisfactions, not always about the salary. Work-life balance and other kinds of options and programs and flexibility, things like that.
Retirement plans also contribute to that too.
Right, right. And I think when I think about these, the ones that concern me are the ones that appear to at the moment be lagging the market, like in really large percentages, you know, potentially like fire chief, police chief, DPW director, and some of the other ones. You know, the ones that were HR manager closer to. But, you know, and again, that, then we need to figure out what is, what is our compensation philosophy so that we know where to bring these in line with, you know, what, what, what do we need to do and what makes sense? Instead of, you know, because otherwise, you know, it feels a little bit like we're just kind of guessing a little bit or just, we don't have all, all the information to make the best decision.
Correct.
Um, I have a, a comment. If I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, Kevin, I know on some of them, especially the city manager line, we only included the compensation, but so, some of them had that compensation and more, and they also had like car allowances and things like that, which would have made that go up, but we just concentrated on the base.
Correct. We did not add
We did add some of those things.
Well, the, 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 the issue became that not all communities shared all their information. Unfortunately, doing these surveys, especially during COVID, it, it was a little bit like the pulling teeth to get some of the information. And Francis is absolutely right. You know, the city manager in some positions or some communities had a, a car allowance or a specific expense amount that they, it had to be city-related expenses, but or something that's really hard to put a number on, a lot of the communities had a assistant city manager in place. And, you know, that's not really a compensation issue, but it, it's probably a quality of life issue.
It helps get the job done.
It, it helps get the job done. And, you know, and it's not just the city manager. I noticed that, and, and I'll just pick on one position that I recall, the police chief. If you look at some of the comparables, the police chief and a lot of comparables were compensated for various different allowances that were probably a carryover of union contracts that they had had in place before they were the, the chief. And in some cases, those compensation numbers were quite substantial. So, that's not even in, in, in place here at the, at this point in time, because not all of them shared that information. And then secondly, just using the police chief as an example, a lot of communities have a deputy police chief. And I know if I remember correctly, the police chief does have kind of an assistant, but nobody designated as the deputy police chief. And again, that's not a compensation issue, but that's a, a, a benefit of helping to get the job done. So, there's a lot of factors that have to be considered. And one of the things we did not do that if we really wanted to interpret the market value numbers and get those a little bit more precise is probably pull out some of the comparables. For instance, there were some communities that were way off the spectrum dollar amount wise. And then there were some that were very, very low. So, typically you might pull those out. But in this case, that was not the real goal of this overall project to make that determination, but those are some of the decisions that you would have to make and, and could be done. However, if you start pulling out too many communities out of the averages, then we need to add some more to it. And probably, I think we worked pretty hard to get as many surveys as we could. You know, we didn't just mail it to them to try to get them. They were approached numerous times to get the information and unfortunately, we just didn't get more than ten or twelve back. So, you know, to, to get more data, we would have to work a little harder to, to get that information. And not to say that you would ever get it either, some just I, I won't say refuse to respond, but it just did not. So, unless there's any other questions, Andrew, could you move to the next slide? So, you know, I think the next steps here would obviously, and we just talked about this, to determine, and, and that, that may be a decision that you might want to make down the road to see if there's any adjustments that might be needed based on the survey alone from, from the data. And, and again, I just pointed out some of the things that we would probably have to do to make that more accurate. But I think you can overall see, you know, if I had to say where you fell financially, it's probably more towards the lag the market than meet the market. And, and again, that's just an overall sense of, of the data that I gathered. So, the other part is to prove the two-part compensation structure for future increases. And this would be an annual increase subject to, but to the bud, the budget and city council approval including across the board increase as well as the merit-based increase. Now, one thing that I, I, I I mentioned in the report, but it, it, it's important to understand this, that if you're going to have a two-part system, that merit-based has to be substantial enough that it actually rewards the employees for their performance. But you, you know, we, we toyed around with a lot of different percentages. And for instance, if you had a one percent merit base we toyed around with a lot of different percentages. And for instance, if you had a one percent merit base increase, that's not as dramatic as showing a two and a half percent. So I I guess my point is, if you're going to have a two-part system, the most significant of it should be based on merit so that there's an actual reward for what they're being asked to do. And then lastly, to adapt the current performance review process and documents, and Francis and Kim and I have talked about that. I've made a couple of suggestions. Uh, but I think it's easily done. Uh, what's most important aside from the forms is the rollout of this. And we've talked about it and what you have to do is prepare the employees for this and make sure that they understand that, one, that no raise is guaranteed and the the their performance will in part be tied to um, um, a a potential pay increase. So it 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 it's only fair that they know that upfront as well as making sure that the actual review process is fair as well as uh having provided the necessary tools they need to to um have to actually accomplish whatever your whatever your it is that you're asking them to accomplish. It has to be reasonable and all the typical things that go along with that. But this whole concept is is performance management in in in, you know, the general sense, I happen to be teaching a class at at the Baker College right now, and I'm performance management. So it kind of fit real well into that class. And that whole process is not just an annual meeting. It 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 really is a year-long process where uh, when you meet with an employee, shouldn't be any surprises of of what what your findings are. That 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 should be a actually just the review and and overview of what you've already talked about for the year. And and the employee should be well-prepared for that, should understand what what it is that they have to do, and should be able to actually meet those objectives. So again, I'll be happy to answer any questions about the presentation or or about the report. Um, again, I I really appreciate working with Francis and Kim. I understand she's leaving. Um, and be happy to work with the uh with Kim's replacement to uh, help implement this and and, you know, I I probably hasn't had a chance to review this, but be happy to go over it with with that individual as well.
I have to ask a question. Just if, as a city, um, if we want to lead, want to be, if you want to change the narrative of culture based on compensation, and we want to go from lagging to even meeting, not even exceeding, what's the first step in getting like the culture of a compensation like in order? Um, I know you mentioned, um, like as far as no surprises, uh, no uh raises are guaranteed. And I'm sure everyone in the city of Salani understands that part. Um, but what uh are some like practical steps toward changing the culture toward compensation? Because it's kind of re- because I again, I worked in education, I worked in sales, I worked in the nonprofit sector, and now in the municipal, it's all lagging um as a city. So uh, we can set the bar and actually meet some needs and meet circumstances. What's one of the first cultural shifts in order to get us as a group to to want to reward our uh employees fairly and um and just move up from where we were?
Well, I I think the first step is actually to roll this program out with the employees, make sure that they under- and and it make sure that they understand um what the whole process is. And, you know, Francis, in in talking to her and going over all the caveats associated with such a program, I think is very well in tune with what it takes. Because I I I told her that, you know, this is work for you. This is what this means. This is work for the city manager. Um, because the city manager now ha- it much like the city council, uh, city manager needs to um be very um clear about what is expected of the employees. And, you know, I think it might take some time. There there's probably a ramping up process. Uh, we talked about, you know, perhaps starting it in in December for a uh potential July uh actual decision on whether there's going to be a um merit increase or not, because that ties it into the budget. So the other thing that I think would be helpful is whatever goals and objectives the the city has overall should be tied into this compensation plan. So tying all those things, if you know, if there's a strategic plan, those ideas all need to be built into this. So the old idea of just conducting an annual performance review is really not adequate. The this is a year-long process. This is an ongoing process. It's something that that, you know, requires constant communication and and constant maintenance. So, you know, I think that whole philosophy would have to change. In knowing what I know about this, the the city and some of the department heads who, you know, I uh know from my short time here, I I think, you know, I I think this is something that they'll easily embrace. I don't think this is going to be a big surprise. And I I know Francis has already talked to them about it. So you know, I I I don't think that performance is a new idea to many of your employees.
Thank you for your expertise.
Thank you for having me.
I do have um some comments and and a a couple of questions. Uh, what's being proposed here is is a two-pronged compensation package that is and across the board, which is akin to um a cost of living increase, but we're not going to call it that because that has other things uh other connotations associated with, and then a merit-based. Um, this is not a proposal to uh have an adjustment in salaries based on the survey data.
Um, That's correct.
That would be something completely different in which that person who's getting paid thirty-nine point six percent less would have a jump all at once in in one, you know, and what else would. Um, the question is, um, I've I've just spent the last year um revising a merit as as part of a committee to revise a merit-based system for another organization. Um, and there's lots of devils in the details for these things. And in terms of, you know, I think you're absolutely correct in that if you go too low with this, it's it's um, you know, it's kind of a slap in the face, kind of an insult, because, you know, somebody who works really hard and and has great uh performance and brings great benefit to the city, uh gets a one percent increase. And the person who just barely does their job and meets the basic requirements gets very close to the same increase. And so I I think that's a real a point that needs to be emphasized is that, you know, this is merit-based and 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 it has to be justified. And with that, I mean, the system has to um take into account the objectives in terms of the goal setting at the beginning of the year has to give uh measurable um input to the to the employee. So at the end of the year, they know why they did or didn't get the merit. Um, so there's, I have a lot of questions for Francis in terms of how this is gets implemented, but um, one of the things that hasn't been discussed is was was there any discussion about bonuses for folks?
Not bonuses.
No, I did not have a discussion about that.
Because that that's another way to show appreciation for a job well done, maybe based on a a particular project, but not throughout the entire year. Um, but anyway, um.
So so council member, um, Wilcox, and I've been looking at um ways to reward employees. And I've started actually, um, it's not a big bonus, but you know, it's a gift card. It's things that I, you know, purchased when the department head has has uh highlighted the performance or said that they're they're worthy, they did something um over extra and beyond. So that's something that's small, you know, to show appreciation. But no, we did not discuss bonuses because we were, I was trying to go with the direction of council was to direct um um, a system that we could use if we decided to uh utilize. Because it it was one of our goals, um, I believe, last year, and we didn't really get to it. Um, you know, to have a compensation study. So.
Oh, I like that this is this has happened. I mean, there's there's uh so much granular, uh, I like the first point, additional data and and review needed. Um, but I'm I'm all for having a merit-based system um so that people can be compensated for the good work that they do. Um, but all the other questions I'll reserve for a private conversation with Francis, so.
Sure. And I and I agree um with what Kevin advised us about. It's going to take a lot of work, uh, especially for the department heads, because we were using a form, the same form for everyone. And, you know, we just can't do that. We have to tailor it toward the goals that we set for them. Um, you know, at the beginning of uh the year. Um, and then also just, you know, some of their job duties. We'll include some some goals and we'll set some deadlines. And then I I realized that when we're setting those, you know, there's going to have to be periods in between, you know, where we sit down and talk about where we are in the process, you know. So it is going to take some, uh, that's if we decide to implement it, and it's all going to depend. And I will let the staff know on whatever pot of money that uh council allot, you know, this is all we have. So you have to use it that way. But I think um the job that he's done, he's done a very good job, given the um, you know, the complexity, I should say, of getting the information. But he's definitely uh have, he's rolled out a good system that I myself do understand. Um, and that would have to be adjusted if council so chose to approve uh the system that he's laid out here. So the numbers will vary, but I I think it's a good start. Um, the unions have a step, you know, and it's, and they negotiated during bargaining time. So they know where they're going. But unfortunately, non-union normally doesn't, but council has periodically, well, historically, I should say, used the same number. Whatever they give, unless sometimes it's been policed when they have uh negotiated, you know, a two, a three, a one, you know, a different years. And so that changes, but we usually follow whatever Ask Me does. So I digress.
And that's always a challenge for communities to decide, okay, do you pay your non-union managers the same percentage increase across the board? Or do you make a decision on merit-based? And that that's always a hard decision to do because not a lot of people want to put the work or the effort into to uh establishing a program that is actually fair for the employees and not seen as um subjective at the end of the year and where the employee doesn't understand why they didn't receive a a a particular raise or why somebody got more than they did. So, you know, that that's the hard part of this. And my recollection in working with your, uh, at least most of your department heads is I I don't believe that this is in any way, shape or form a a way to uh motivate your employees to do more. I think they're already doing a great job, but this is really a way to um, reward them for what they're already doing. I think, you know, based on my uh experience with them, they're already performing well. Um, and why should they not be compensated accordingly? And with that, I'll end my presentation. And I I told Francis that I'd be happy to work with her in any way in the future to uh sister with uh rolling this process out.
Thank you, Kevin. I I I publicly want to thank him for for the work that he's done. I think he's done an amazing job in having some insight on what we do. That was, you know, we had an edge on that. And so I just want to say thank you uh for helping us with this project and also for agreeing um to be accessible to us in the future. Appreciate it.
Well, thank you in in return for that. I enjoy doing.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Just want to say thank you, Kevin, and it's good to see you. It's been a while.
You too.
Yes.
Been a while since I've attended a council meeting.
Yes, it has been. But thank you so very much. Enjoyed enjoyed working with you when you were uh here with us uh at the city.
We lost Kevin. We lost Kevin to yuck, like everyone.
I know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good evening.
Not a good loss at all. Missed having you around, so.
I miss being around too. Made a lot of friends there.
Yes. Are there any questions or further discussion? Any questions for Kevin or the city manager? Or Kim? Okay. Okay, seeing none, no questions, no discussion. So uh, Mr. Linga, would you call the role, please?
Council member, Wilcox.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Council member Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Council member Morgan.
Yes.
Council member Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously. Council moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-one.
Mr. Will, uh, excuse me, um, Mr. Linga.
Can I interrupt? I I just want to make a motion to extend the meeting to eleven o'clock. It's getting up to close to ten o'clock.
I may have to make an emergency leave. I just wanted to stay around for this resolution.
Is there a second?
A second, that extension.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think I heard just about everyone. All right, thank you. Okay, go ahead, uh, Clerk Kalinga, please.
Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-two-seven resolved by the council of the city of Salani, whereas city councils evaluated both the city manager and city clerk for their performance. And whereas both employees were rated highly in their performance reviews, and whereas both employee salaries salary were increased by three percent. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council approved the above salary increases effective retroactive weeks to date of employee evaluations.
So moved.
For.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments?
Uh, I I I thought this should be brought back up. Um, when you think about, uh, again, I'm so glad we had the compensation study and gave us some um more context on what's important and factoring in. Um, job description of goals for the city and employee uh performance. Um, and with these two individuals in question, uh, the city manager and the clerk, um, it's a host of things that I feel like that's been done in their watch since before up until and after their uh performance evaluation, in which they they scored, uh, hired him, and we scored him. Um, I think a council of average, uh, from what they scored themselves, I think we scored on average higher than they felt like they did themselves. And there, I just want to say, uh, it's a few noteworthy things, but things, especially when we're talking about, for me, um, performance, not just evaluation and professionalism, but when we think about the simple things like um the hiring processes of uh like raising Reagan Basavika, who was a who who retired or stepped down from the position in the finances just to be recruited and uh and brought back into our city to win more awards for us to be an award-winning city. Those things are not happenstance. That's leadership and direction, having an eye for talent. Um, and when you think about things like uh Clerk Kalinga, who came to work every single day during COVID, who went through the twenty-twenty election cycles, who went above and beyond, uh, when you think about the state statutes, uh, as far as of not even having a direction where he would go research and do the necessary work that he wasn't called on to do to make sure things happen. And we're talking about people that we value in our city. We're not just talking about positions or titles. We're talking about, oh, and we're talking about the uh with the city manager. Isn't, it was a dispute for years between the firefighters um in the medical, uh, the poem, to have that actually settle, when it went from litigation to actually settle. Those are people working with people. Those are things that can't be overlooked. When we're talking about the IT, something that previous city managers wanted to take uh in under the tutelage, but just somehow, some way didn't happen. But now things are literally moving forward. And as some of this, on so many council meetings have been But now things are literally moving forward, and as some of this, on so many council meetings have been stated. The, the type of, the conditions that we're in financially, I mean, fiscally, um, just where we are. It's not happenstance, it's due to the leadership of uh our city manager and our clerk, who've taken these positions under duress, or there wasn't, um, they. So I, I wanted to make this because of these two-point-five-three percent increases, you know, I think is necessary. And I think the compensation study is in conjunction with how undercompensated these major, um, titles are in our city. And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because I think, um. It's, it's past due and they earned it, and I know whatever happened since the review, we haven't reviewed it or got back to what we think we should do. And I think the three percent is in order, and so I wanted to state that for the record, and I just want to thank them both for their service, um, here in the city of Ypsilanti.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Councilmember Morgan. Any other questions or comments? Uh, Ms. Simmons?
So, I'm just confused. So how did this end up on our agenda? Who brought this?
Councilmember Morgan.
It was supported by another.
Yeah, okay, who was that?
I brought it and it was supported by Somerville.
Okay.
Any one of us could have brought it.
Yes, Councilmember Simmons.
I guess, I guess I'm, you know, we just had this big report with. You, you know, where things are at, and again, you know, for me, I do want to understand, like, you know, I, I'm concerned about these other positions too. I mean, I, I just don't have my notes in front of me now, but um. Some of these other positions, I mean, they're in double digits, uh, you know, negative from uh what the averages are, and um. You know, I, I guess.
That, that would be my job um to do, as, as Mr. Will said, you just adopted the, the, the system. So then that will be my job, working with the HR director to come up with the evaluation system. And it would basically depend on um what council, what we have left over, you know? Because before I did anything, I would definitely come to council for approval to allocate funding if we were to do it within this fiscal year. Um, if we waited till budget time, then I would just wait till budget time and probably work with the um Reagan to come up with a number. That we think, you know, um, is amicable and bring that to, you know, I'll put it in the budget as a line item. And it will be up to council to approve when they're approving the budget. But um, we have a job to do just by um approving the system. Because now I have to go in, you know, analyze each uh position and make some realistic goals. Some things that are measurable. So I said all that to say, um. This is, is a culmination. I'll let him say it though. This is a culmination of like, uh, two, of uh two years worth of work, and um. I was very happy when uh Councilmember Morgan approached us to ask for these things. And I think he was doing it um under the direction that council had given. Um, when it was time for evaluation. I think it was understood by, um, at that time, the council was not prepared to make any decisions. Without having some type of system or some, you know, something. Of how we would implement something like this. So at that time, I was directed to do so. And so this is how this came about, but.
Yeah, so, so let me just interrupt. So that makes sense to me, right? I understand that our responsibility is to your role and the city clerk's role. Um, but, and right, we approved to, you know, put some type of system in place, which I think we definitely need. It makes a lot of sense, and so. You, you know, so that system, I guess, as you said, is gonna take some work and you'll have to work out kind of some budget. You know, options and things like that before you can make the decision about what is going to happen. Um, I guess in relation to the information that was provided, and so. You know, in some ways, I feel like, I, you know, I need to understand that information to understand the whole budget picture. Decision right now about this too. It seems maybe premature.
Well, well, when I say that, because my goals were set. And the city clerks were set. Well, mine was. I know mine was, so. My goals were set and there was an evaluation, so. Pretty much that process was started on the manager and clerk. That process has not been started with the department heads, because as we stated, and Kevin um also stated. Their evaluation forms need to be redone. So we can't do that. We don't have anything to measure, but council does have something to measure for the city manager. And the city clerk, because our um evaluations were tailored toward our job descriptions and toward. What mine's was toward, toward the goals of the city. So that is something that is measurable. Now, when you talk about the other um non-union department heads, so now we have to redo theirs. We have to redo their evaluation so that it is measurable, and it's not just a template that we fill out, the same one for each one. So I, I hope you understand what I'm saying, because you're saying, you know, what about the other people? They didn't have any, they didn't have the same evaluation process. And so from, from now on, theirs will be more tailored toward the goals um that are given to them. From me. If it's department heads, if it's non-union employees that are under a department head. Well, then their, their supervisor, their department head will set measures and goals for them, and so it's kind of the same thing.
Is this something you're looking to do for the next fiscal year or this current fiscal year? You're, you need to decide that.
What do you mean? Is it something I'm?
Well, the actions that you're gonna take as it relates to the folks that you're responsible for.
Um, the people that I'm responsible for, not this fiscal year, because we have to rewrite. You know, my goals next year will determine what goals I set for them. Cause you know, I didn't like set. I need you to do this by this and this date, because we didn't have a system. And so now, I think, as I said during the budget time, we'll look at what we have and see what we have that we can set aside. For merit-based raises, but then also we'll redo all of their uh evaluations so that they're specific. I liked the, when you came in and you looked at our evaluation, you're like, what is this? I mean, you know, and you took that and made it a good tool. And so now we need to duplicate that. We need to make good, good evaluation tools for our department heads. And then um, you know, if they're going to be um. Utilizing a system for any non-union employees, but most of the employees that are under our department heads are in a union. You know, some of them aren't non-union, but the few that are non-union, you know, they'll have to have a, you know, something similar. Where it's tailored, and then I think they'll enjoy even coming to work, you know, it's like, I know I've got something to work for, you know? And, and, you know, they're, they're watching me. It's not just what was in my job description, you know, I have a project. So I think that, I think this is gonna be good overall, but um, as I said, it's up to council, whatever council decides. But I was happy that um Councilmember Morgan wanted to bring this back to the table. Because um it was originally, no raise was considered, because we didn't have a system. Um, but we did have an evaluation, but we didn't have a system, so.
But we did, we did authorize a three percent raise, did we not? Was, was I wrong?
No, we didn't. We didn't. Maybe for council, I know council got a raise, but city manager myself didn't. I mean, city clerk myself didn't. I mentioned though, that that's how it had been done in the past. When I first started as clerk, when I had my evaluation. They would approve the evaluation and an increase, but it hadn't been done like that uh most recently. So there was nothing. Am I right? Are you done? Are you done, Councilmember Simmons?
I'm done, yeah, right now, for now.
Okay, uh, Councilmember, I mean, Mr. Jones Chance? You're muted.
Sorry, I was saying, I think Mr. Helen got had an answer to the question. I'll wait for that.
Um, we, we were, the city clerk and the city manager were much of the same uh step increase that uh all employees got. The two-point-five percent.
Thank you. So, so we did authorize a two-point-five percent raise at, when we, after we did, completed the valuations.
So.
This would represent a, a five-point-five percent increase total, if you're looking at it for the fiscal year.
Right, I guess I just ca, I just, I just saw that as a, a cost of living adjustment. Not for something that was per goals, because everyone else got a two-point-five and it wasn't based on accomplishing anything. But because I had specific goals, and because Andrew had specific goals, that's what makes us different. And in, and in the past, historically, uh, that's how it was done. We got whatever the cost of living adjustment was, but then we were judged on our um. Our goals.
Well, but they weren't really goals, right? We just evaluated on you doing your job. What I mean is, the, the way the, 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 the uh evaluation was written out was that we selected things that we thought were, were. Uh, representative of the work that you are expected to do, and not that there weren't things that you had, you know, you both, I think, added in. As uh maybe stuff that was unique to the, that year or.
Right, so, so then you've got, you got a list of things, okay, so, okay, considering that, if you feel like that's just what's accepted. You have a list of things that. Um, we felt were, were highlights or that, that we did. And I, I must say that when I took the position, um, there were a lot of things undone. Um, I'm not gonna compare myself to any other manager, but they had other benefits that I don't have, and they didn't accomplish any of the goals. But um, it was a very tumultuous time, and I just listed some of the things that I was, um. That I was able to do, and a lot of them um were way overdue. Um, thank you, Councilmember Morgan, for mentioning the uh fire contract, which was um. It had expired, been expired for three years, and we were facing a big lawsuit. And um. I was able to go in there and reach an agreement with them. I think those things are um. Exceptional. Um, because we continue to be at a stalemate with that, and so I, I'm not gonna, I've already written them down, so I'm not gonna. It's up to council how they feel about them, and if they feel like they are worthy. Um, my day-to-day job is supervising, um, my department heads and making sure the services. I know what those things are. But a lot of these other things um were things that um I believe were highlights. And so I digress. Okay, Mr. Jones Chance?
Uh, yeah, I think the question here is actually pretty simple. I mean, um, you know, if we're taking the previous two and a half percent as a justifiable. Cost of living increase, then, and, and, you know, inflation what it was, it may well have been. Um, then the question really is, does the work? Was the work done? Did, did they ever go above and beyond? And um, does it merit three percent? I mean, that's, that's really the only question. Um, for me, the answer is pretty obviously yes. Um, and, you know, going three percent above inflation is not, I don't think, a huge deal. Especially when we're looking at a sixty-five-hundred-dollar budget item. Yeah, I mean, it, it just, I don't know, it doesn't, it doesn't. It doesn't seem like we need to be here till eleven.
I agree. Councilmember Simmons, were you done? Are you done?
Yeah, yeah, so, um, you know, I think that the, the point is though, is that we also, as council members, don't have our. You know, we're, we've been working on how we're gonna work these things, and so. You know, we don't have our own kind of compensation philosophy as it relates to the city manager, city clerk. Um, and so. You know, we did the, the two and a half percent, I think, as, at least a recognition of something. I didn't think of that as necessarily. Just a cost of living increase. I mean, there was, in the past year plus, um, I didn't, I mean, I didn't personally get a raise in my job. I mean, a lot of people, right, because of just budgets and crunches and things, and so to me, that was a recognition of, of appreciation for the work. Um, I think, you know. I was interested in doing this in the upcoming fiscal year, as we looked at the evaluation process. And um kept refining it, enhancing it, and making it better, because it is something that I want to put in play. I don't know that I'm like thrilled how this has, this has kind of come up here. I appreciate and, and, and uh respect. And uh highly value our, our clerk and manager, so it's, this is more of a principle thing versus a reflection of, of anything like that, but. You know, I'm just not sure I'm appreciative of this, how this has kind of gone about, I guess, in some ways. Um, so, right, it, it's, it's, it's relatively minor as it relates to our budget, so. I'll vote for it, um, because I do appreciate their work, but um, in a big picture sense, um, but you know, I don't know, but. But since we don't want to be here till eleven, I will stop there.
Any other questions, comments, discussion? Okay, seeing none. Clerk Kalinga, call the role, please.
Mayor Proton Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxon?
Yes.
Uh, seven, yes, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your service. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, Clerk Kalinga.
Thank you, Councilmember.
I sent a few private texts to a few people. I have to respond to emergency. Please forgive me.
Council moving on to the next resolution, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-two-eight. Resolved by the council of the city of Ypsilanti, whereas Public Act three-three-six of nineteen forty-seven is an act to prohibit strikes by certain public employees. To provide review from disciplinary action with respect thereto, to provide for mediation grievances and the holding of elections. To declare and protect the rights and privileges of public employees, to require certain provision in collective bargaining agreements. To prescribe means of enforcement and penalties for violation of provision of this act. And whereas changes to this act would acknowledge that there are times when termination is the most appropriate response to egregious conduct of a public safety employee. And whereas egregious conduct can lead to risk of liability and inability to successfully prosecute cases in which the employee is involved. Endanger the careers of colleagues and put colleagues at risk. And whereas if legislation is introduced and enacted, it would assist in the hiring of police officers of character managing the mission of the city of Ypsilanti. And whereas it would only protect the public from hiring officers that, that have been terminated from other jurisdictions. For egregious conduct, it would also protect the officers serving this community and the integrity of the Ypsilanti Police Department. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city of Ypsilanti strongly encourages the Michigan Legislature to move steadfast. In reforming Public Act three-three-six of nineteen forty-seven and for the governor to sign it into law. Be it further resolved that the city council direct city clerk to board this resolutions with Michigan House, Michigan Senate, Governor Whitner. Washington County Board of Commissioners and Kirk Prophet, the city lobbyist.
So moved.
There's support?
Support.
Thank you. Been moved and supported. Any questions or comments, discussion? Seeing none. I see no hands or hear none. Uh, Clerk Kalinga, call the role, please.
Councilmember Somerville?
Yes.
Mayor Richardson?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
He's.
Councilmember Simmons?
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Motion carries with six yes and one absence.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-two-nine. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsalany, whereas the correctional telecom sector is a business that annually generates one point four billion in revenue. And whereas the price of phone calls from correctional facilities are being driven higher. And whereas African Americans and Latinx make up thirty-two percent of the total US population while accounting for fifty-six percent of those incarcerated. And whereas the high cost of phone calls for correctional facilities only increases the wealth gap between minority groups and white individuals. And whereas connecting with loved ones will, while incarcerated reduces rates of recidivism. Now there, therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Ipsalany strongly urged Washington County to provide these incarcerated. With access to free telephone access and provide an environment of support from family and friends while incarcerated. Be it further resolved that City Council direct City Clerk to provide this resolutions to the Washington County Board of Commissioners.
So moved.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments? Discussion? Is there anyone here to do a presentation on this particular item? Anyone from the? From Y-PAC?
Doesn't look like.
Mayor, I was, uh, during the last meeting, I was directed to draft a resolution. This is based off a resolution that was requested by Y-PAC, but I, I drafted the resolution based off their request.
All right, thank you. Okay, seeing no questions or discussion. Call the roll, please.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
With six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to resolution. Twenty twenty-one dash two-three-one. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsalany, whereas Police Advisory Commission passed Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero-zero-two recommending the removal of Commissioner Termin. And whereas the recommendation was based on lack of attendance at commission meetings. And whereas the council realizes the importance of boarding commission members to be present for efficient function of each public body. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Ipsalany removes Commissioner Precious Termin from the Police Advisory Commission. And directs the City Clerk to notify Commissioner Termin and Police Advisory Commission of dismissal.
As to move.
It's been moved and supported. Questions, comments, discussion? Uh, Clerk Kalanga.
Uh, Council, if I may, um, just a, a bit of clarification. Uh, this, based on the Charter Amendment in twenty fourteen, will require five votes for removal.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wilcoxen.
This is a very, uh, straightforward thing. Um, Ms. Termin had, had applied to be on here, had gone through and been, been selected and then I don't think she showed up for any of the meetings. Um, so it's, it's. It's pretty straightforward.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Motion carries with seven yes votes, one absence.
Thank you.
Council, moving on to the next resolution. Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-three-two. Resolved by the Council of the City of Ipsalany, whereas Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one-zero-eight. Establishing the Peninsular Dam Public Engagement Ad-Hoc Committee requires the terms of engagement committee to be reviewed in October twenty twenty-one. And extended by decision of council. And whereas the council must either reaffirm the committee to continue its work or determine if its mission has been completed and dissolved the committee. Now therefore be resolved by the City of Ipsalany that the City Council of the City of Ipsalany, A, reaffirm the committee to continue its work. B, determine the committee has satisfactorily completed its mission and dissolved the committee.
Is there a motion?
I'll, I'll some move. Um, but I, I, I want to move this specifically within, with an amendment, so. I moved to have this, uh. Uh, be option two, uh, with the addition that the, um. The committee be dissolved at the end of the month. There is a meeting that is scheduled, uh, October twenty-seventh. To discuss, uh, to get input into a, a town hall that will be scheduled for, uh. Sometime in early to mid-November. Um, so I'd like to amend this to, to be option two with the, uh, dissolution date of, uh, November first.
Is there support for that amendment? Could you explain that amendment? I, I'm not quite sure.
Sure, I, I can speak to this. Um, so this committee was set up, uh, you know, as part of, uh, the grant process for the DNR. And just as a general idea that it's a good thing to do, right, is to get people involved. Uh, with the public engagement around this infrastructure project. Um, the, the committee has met several times. They chaired these meetings. Um, there was input into what should be considered for the meetings that have taken place so far. And, um, the idea is that they will have input into the, into the next meeting. And the reason I'm asking for this to be dissolved is that, um, it served its course. Um, you know, we now have information from the first round of, of funding that will, will inform. Uh, presentations at the, at the town hall meeting. Uh, we have the next round of funding that goes through next year, but there's not. Uh, you know, we had expected that there would be information coming out at, at various. Periods during the year, but that's not the way this works. The, 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 the information comes out. Um, you know, at the end of the grant cycle when all the analysis has been done, so. Um, there's no longer any, uh, need for this committee to have input into those meetings. Um, city staff, um, and the consultant that we've hired have pretty much, uh, taken care of, um, the format of those meetings as well. Um, I think it served its function, so what I want to do is I, I want to allow for it to have the last meeting that's already been scheduled, which is in October twenty-seventh. Um, and then have this sunset. So the, the amendment is to. Select option number two and have the dissolution date as November first.
Support.
Okay, the amendment has been. An amendment has been moved and, and supported. To end the, the committee on, or that the. Section B of the resolution would end the committee at the end of this month. All of those in favor of the amendment? Or do we have to cut? It has to be roll call, I'm sorry, yes.
Um, on the amendment, I will read the last, now therefore be it resolved as it now reads. Or will read, now therefore be it resolved by the City of Ipsalany that the City Council of the City of Ipsalany. Determine the committee has satisfactorily completed its mission and dissolve the committee on November first.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
With six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
Now, is there any discussion or comments, questions on the? Original. Motion. Okay, uh, Mr. Ling, are we voting on?
This will be, uh, approving Resolution number twenty twenty-one dash two-three-two as amended. So it will be approved with that amendment.
Okay. And seeing no questions or comments, no hands, please call the roll.
Mr. Jones Chance.
Yes.
Councilmember Wilcoxen.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brown.
Yes.
Councilmember Somerville.
Yes.
Mayor Richardson.
Yes.
Councilmember Simmons.
Yes.
With six yes and one absence, the motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Council, moving on with the agenda, we are on boards and commission liaison reports. Uh, the first being, uh, Police Advisory Commission, which is Councilmember Morgan. So we can move on to the Human Relations Committee, which is Mayor Proton Brown.
I, I'll send an email to council, my apologies.
Uh, moving on to the next one, Arts Commission, which is Councilmember Somerville.
Nothing to report.
Um, next would be Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, Councilmember, uh, Wilcoxen.
All right, jump ahead here, sorry. Give me a moment, um. What happened here, um? Pretty much business as usual. Um, there are, um, the M Parks Community Service Awards, uh, have been, um. Gone through the state and there are four people in the, uh. In the community that, um, have been, uh, given awards and basically this is the plaque, uh, gratitude for their service. Um, uh, one is the Ipsalany Quanis, one is Bob Kuzynski, who is on the Non-Motorized, uh, Advisory Commission. Who's done a great deal of work on that subcommittee. Um, the other is the Friends of, uh, Rutherford Pool, um, for all the work they've done in, in, uh, rehabilitating the pool. And, and really making that, that asset shine. And the last is Pete Murdock. Um, for all the work that he put into in his career to, uh, as a champion for the park system, so. Um, what, uh. Would usually happen with this is that the, um, the presentation would be in Lansing, uh, through M Parks. But because of COVID, they've decided to do this differently and, and basically what they're looking for is a, is a public, um. Public meeting in which the, you know, the presentations could be made, and so, um. Various, uh, alternatives were, were discussed, but basically the, uh, the best. Thing that could come up with was to have these presentations at a future council meeting. Um, I've been in touch with, uh, with, um, Mary, uh, Heng, who was, uh. Grace's, uh, the executor for Grace and, and Pete's, um. Uh, estates and, uh, to get, uh, a next gift can or someone who would accept that, uh, plaque on their behalf. And so I'm, I'm still working on that, but I'll, I'll work with, uh, getting this on to an agenda, uh, in the next month. So. And. There's another group from, from EMU is looking to have, uh, little libraries installed in, uh, uh, public parks. Um, we went over the, you know, the benefits of that, but the, the potential risks for that of having that in Riverside Park and Frog Island. Um, and so they're still working on that and, uh, this is a sorority from EMU has proposed that, so as that comes up, um, I'll keep informed.
Thank you.
Uh, the next liaison report is, uh, Sustainability Commission. Uh, you're meeting.
I'm just clicking away here, um. Uh, it was a very full meeting, uh, with presentations and so the actual business, uh, did not really, uh, get to go. Too much further, but there was a, a presentation from Joe Meyer on, um, the Water Street Brownfield. And what that looked like and there were lots of good questions from the Sustainability Group. Um, we had that presentation from, from Joe and Nathan Vogt from, from the county, um, earlier. Um, but Joe was, uh, answering a lot of the questions so the Sustainability Commission could, uh, get up to speed on that for those folks that didn't attend the meeting that we had the presentation at. The other thing was a presentation from, uh, an independent group who was, uh. Monitoring and advocating for, uh, municipal power systems. Um, and City of Ann Arbor has decided, has recently finished the feasibility study in terms of. Creating a, uh, a municipal, uh, utility for electricity and getting away from DTE. And what this looks like in the, in the very beginning stages is that. Um, you know, people can buy power from whoever they want, right? They don't have to buy it from DTE and what it, what it will entail is. Um, purchasing the infrastructure from DTE and then, uh, securing a contract, uh, to be provided from, um. From another supplier, um, being hooked to the grid, they can do that from anybody in the country. Um, this has been a good thing. Uh, it actually hasn't happened in quite some time. There are some issues with, uh, being grandfathered, things like that. They expect to be challenged on this by DTE. The benefits of this is that, you know, the city gets some control over, um. Over their own power, uh. Costs and, and where we get the power from and kind of, uh, DT has lagged in terms of, uh. Throughout the state and throughout the country in terms of what their estimate is for, for, uh, coming up to speed on renewable energy. And so that, those are a couple of the benefits and so we should pay attention to, you know, the feasibility study from, um. From Ann Arbor and they will be looking for other, uh. Municipalities to join in that to, to add power to that, uh, that, um. Purchasing, so, um, that may become, be coming before us as a, a resolution from the Sustainability Commission in the future, so. Um, that's all I've got for them.
Thank you.
Uh, Council, the next is HTC.
Nothing to report tonight.
Um, then we have Planning Commission.
Planning Commission meets tomorrow and, uh, zoning has not met.
Council, moving on to the next section. Liaison reports. Uh, first is SEMCOG.
Uh, yes, on last Thursday, SEMCOG had their general assembly. And it was at, um, the Ford House in Gross Point Shores. Um, we did take a tour of the house and the best way, um. Is I will send everyone the, um, the link. For the, um, for the sessions that they had. That is the best way for me to report on them. So, uh, and the, it was a good day, so it was from, uh. Actually, it was from nine in the morning till three in the afternoon, so. Uh, with the tour of the house being from four, three to four, so that's it.
Next up is Watts.
Um, nothing to report previously, but we have a meeting tomorrow, so.
Urban County.
Um, I don't have a report on that. I wasn't able to attend the last meeting. I'm not sure if, uh, Joe was here or I see, uh, Mr. Jacobs just popped up. So, did you have something on that? No, you were preparing for DDA, okay.
Mayor, uh, not, not much happened. We just went over how the allocation of funds.
Mayor, uh, not, not much happened. We just went over how the allocation of funds, uh, would likely happen. But it was, it was more of a, a instructional meeting instead of a, uh, informative meeting.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to DDA.
Yeah, we've got a meeting Thursday talking about a new grant from the Match on Main program. Um, and also approving a parking deck feasibility study for Depot Town.
Uh, next is Rutherford Pool.
Uh, unfortunately, I wasn't able to make it because it was in conflict with the Parks and Rec meeting, but, uh, or no, it was another meeting. But anyway, uh, they had a recent work day, uh, the Saturday, they finally got the, uh, the plaque up. And they did some landscaping that had been called for with the renovations. There were gaps between the sidewalks and mud holes. And things like that, that they'd taken care of. And, uh, work is proceeding on replacing the floor. I had mentioned this in the previous meeting that, uh, the company that did the floor was, was not satisfied with the work they had done. And they'd been called on it and they're replacing the floor at their own cost. So.
Council next item is council proposed business.
Okay. Uh, Mayor Pro Tim?
Nothing tonight.
Uh, Councilmember Sim- Simmons?
Yeah, so, um, just one thing I wanted to bring up, um, for, I guess, Mr. Akers. Someone sent me a typewritten letter, which people don't do anymore, but, um, over on Louise Street. Um, they had some complaints about the, um, recycling crews and yard waste crews. Um, about just, I guess, you know, tossing the bins around and, um. Sometimes recycling stuff, you know, kind of does, doesn't always make it into the truck. And I guess it gets left. Um, you know, kind of left in the street. Anyway, so, so they just kind of just had some overall. Um, complaints about just how the service has been. Um, like I said, it's on Louise Street. So I, I guess we can just. Take a look at, at that and what's been going on, but, um. Yeah. But it was recycling specifically in yard waste services. And I can send, I can always forward you the letter, Ron.
If you need to form me a letter, that'd be great.
Yeah, I'll do that.
We'll address it with our, with our, well, staff, so.
No problem. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Jones Chance?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Um. Councilmember Somerville?
Nothing for me tonight.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Will Coxon?
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Sunday I showed up, uh, was the day, the, the rain date for repainting of the Black Lives Matter mural in, um. Riverside Park. Uh, it was a beautiful day. Lots of people showed up. Uh, we were done in an hour. Um, there was great music and food and, and a great sense of community. And then we realized that there were two different colors involved. And so we got to repaint the whole thing all over again. Um, which took about another hour. Um, recently, um. Another constituent, uh, contacted me about, uh, property they own that is, uh, between North Congress and South Congress. Their address is on North Congress, but, um, it's a, it's an odd little triangle there. And, and they informed me that there was a proposed sidewalk for the back of their property. And that, that property has been, you know, just backyard for four different houses on that block for years. Um, and so I was hoping to get information, um, about, you know, the timing of that plan. Um, unfortunately, I, I had sent an email to Andy and Joe and Francis, but they've got caught in my, uh. My email and I finally got it sent out this afternoon. So, um, I'll be looking for more information on that. I'm, I'm kind of curious to, you know, the timeline of that and why we're putting in a sidewalk now as opposed to why it hasn't been there for a hundred years. But, um, uh, so I'll continue that conversation offline. Uh, but they're very distraught because they bought this property with a backyard. And now they're told that twenty, twenty feet of the property is going to be taken up with a sidewalk that, um, actually encroaches on. When you look at it, it encroaches on structures, uh, throughout that street. Parts of the house, parts of the neighbor's house, parts of the neighbor's garage, uh, go into that easement. So it's kind of an issue for those four residents. And so, um, I'll take that up with, with Andy and, and Joe.
So where was that? Where is that?
Um, it's right where, uh, Congress splits. It's a, a triangular block. Um, and all of the.
Just past, right there at the park.
Yeah, just west of the park where it splits and all those, all those homes, uh, their addresses are on North Congress. Um, and their backyards go out to South Congress. And, and so, you know, when they applied for a permit to, uh, put up a shed. Uh, they were told that, that, that shed, the placement was in the easement for a new sidewalk. And they were not aware of that when they bought the house and, you know, have that statement that if I'd known that, I wouldn't have bought the house.
Oh, sorry.
So that's kind of where we are. But I, I'm looking for information on what the process is to get a zoning variance and, and figure out. What the, what the impetus was for the sidewalk too. So, um, so I'll follow up with, with Andy.
Steve. Steve, no, and, and I don't have full information on this, but we will be roping in Ron and Bonnie on this. Because we were informed by them that there was a plan for a sidewalk. So, um, but we can let you know all the processes and everything. And we will get that to you tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, um. Okay, everybody's so scattered now and some I'm not seeing. Okay, did I all, did every council person get chance to give their? Proposed business? Okay. All right, thank you. Uh. Uh, just today, um, this is for Mr. Akers. I noticed a, a couple of really big potholes on Ferris Street. Uh, going towards Hamilton. The one that I really saw that was really large was right there at, um. At the little triangle, you know, where, uh, Ferris and, uh. East Ainsworth come together and there's a triangle that sits there. In the street, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, right in there, there's a big what? Big hole. And then also a little bit west of there. Um, going towards Hamilton. Okay, um, all right, I received a request and I did send it, uh, on. For a speed, uh, tracking, um, machine on, uh, Ainsworth Circle. Uh, there's a lot of speeding that goes on in there and they, the people there are actually requesting, uh, speed bumps. Not through this year, but come spring when speed bumps go down. So, um. Requests came, I got a call last week and had also received a call about that, uh, same. The speeding on the circle before. And we do need to, uh, to do something, look at something. That is going to, um, that we can do to try to slow people down all over the city. Speeding is, I get calls, I get stopped in the stores and everywhere, people talking about people speeding. So, uh, I don't know what we can do. I know that, um. I believe it was Councilmember Somerville last meeting talked about us having a, just a workshop or a work session on speeding. So if we could, I hope, uh, staff is working on that. And that we can come up with some really good ideas of something that we can do, uh, besides just the, the bike lanes. Because, um, I've gotten reports that the bike lanes don't really slow people down. It just backs up traffic when the light turns red. So, uh, but if we can do something with that. Also, I got a call this afternoon about trees hanging, overhanging trees on Orchard Street. Uh, and also, um, there's vines hanging over, uh, wires. Coming out of one backyard into, over wires that are, that go into the next person's backyard. It's two backyards that come together, but the vines are over the, the actual, uh, the wires. And I don't know what we can do about that. But it's, um, that house is at the top of the, um, the hill on Orchard Street. Just before it begins to go back down. If you're going up the hill from Frederick. At the top of the hill before it starts to go down again, you'll see the trees overhanging and also the trees that. In, into the street, the, um, person said. So if we could have some check out on that, please. Thank you. I have some other things, but because of time, I'll hold on to them. Thank you.
Next item is reported.
I have nothing tonight.
And that moves us to adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
There's support?
I'll support.
Meeting adjourned. Good night.